Call the meeting to order. Tiffany, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Garvey, present.
President.
Councilwoman Harjo, present.
President. Like the record, we do have a form for Tuesday, March 11th. Run down to, actually, Councilman Harjo, did you have an agenda items we'd like to change or add?
Okay.
Councilman Harjo?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion if we can adjust some of the agenda items here. Non-action item number, excuse me, old business. Excuse me, new business, number six, can we move that up to just behind the Harrison Company audit in presentation?
Harrison first or the county?
To have Harris first and then the county.
Okay.
And as well, adding executive session under seventy-six, excuse me, seventy-four, two oh six, subsection one, E and F.
In the beginning or in the end?
In the end.
All right, there's a motion, do I have a second? Was that a motion, sorry?
Excuse me, yes, it was a motion and I have one more. Can we switch the order of new business items, number two and three? If I can reread all that.
Okay, Councilman Harjo, so we're going to move the old business of six, new business of six.
New business six to just behind the audit presentation by Harrison.
Okay, executive session.
Under E and F.
F, okay.
And switching the order under new business between two and three, reversing positions.
Second motion. Been motioned and seconded to add new business number six after the presentation of Harrison Company. To reverse two and three on new business and then to add executive session, be an F, any further discussion? Harry, now I'll put the question, Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
So, we're going to start out the presentation with Harrison Company. Howdy. So Paula, you want to take the lead on this one or you want to let them just roll with it?
Well, Mayor, Council, I'd like to introduce you to Josh and Morgan with Ace and Co. They come in and do our compliance audit after Cassie with Bailey and Cushing. You guys got questions, now's the time.
Thank you, Paula. Good evening, my name is Morgan Browning, I'm an audit director at Harris. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to present the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit and go over financial statement items. My plan is to do kind of an overview of the audit, discuss our reports, we issue three reports, go over some financial statement items, some significant items that happened during the year and then open it up to any questions that you have. So, the first report that I'm going to go over is the independent audit report, it's on pages four through six of the audit. The report discusses management's responsibility to prepare these financial statements. They're also responsible for establishing internal controls sufficient to prevent and detect material misstatements in these financials. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are free from material misstatement. That's our responsibility. So, the key point there is that management has to have their own internal control or not the internal control. So, we present the opinion using criteria set forth by the Government Accounting Standards Board. We audit in accordance with government auditing standards and so that's the criteria we use to hold management accountable to. So, the opinion that we're rendering for fiscal year 2024 is termed in our profession an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion for all intents and purposes, it's the highest level assurance that you can obtain in an audit. So, congratulations to Paula and Tiffany for getting a clean opinion on the financial statements. The second report that I'm going to go over is on pages seventy through seventy-two. It's a report required by government auditing standards. There's two parts to the report, there's internal controls and there's compliance. Again, management's responsible for having their own internal control. Our responsibility as auditors is to understand your internal controls and to test to ensure that controls are implemented. If during the course of our audit, we uncover a lot of errors, we see problems with internal control within the design or implementation, this report would reference findings, that's one part of the audit. The other is compliance. In accordance with government auditing standard, we're required to test compliance with grants, contracts, laws and regulations. And if there are non-compliance associated with those tests, this report would also reference findings. So, for fiscal year 2024, I'm pleased to report to you that there were no findings with internal control and no non-compliance noted for the city of Mountain Home. The third report that I'm going to go over is a report on compliance with major federal award programs. That's on pages seventy-two and seventy-four of the report. As part of that audit, it requires the auditors to determine major programs and test compliance with those programs. So, the two programs that we selected during the audit is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which use a lot of that ARPA money and water and also in broadband, and the drinking water state revolving loan fund, which is a loan program that's in your water and sewer fund. So, the opinion that we're rendering for fiscal year 2024 is, again, it's an unmodified opinion. So, it's our opinion that you comply in all material respects with the program requirements set forth by that program. There are also no internal control issues noted with federal award compliance and no non-compliance noted as well, no findings associated with that federal programs audit. So, in summary, you're getting a clean opinion on the financial statements and no audit findings.
Morgan?
Yes.
What is the material weakness ident, like what does that mean, material weakness?
Right, so, the material weakness is the most severe deficiency and it means there's probably going to be a misstatement. There's a strong likelihood that there's a misstatement in the financials that merits the attention of those charged with governance. And generally, a material weakness is kind of a byproduct of a material misstatement that we identified in the audit. So, if we identified a misstatement that was a million dollars or something like, we would compare that to materiality thresholds and we would judgmentally look at that and say, look at the volume of transactions associated with that deficiency, what caused that deficiency? And if it was a material adjustment, it would most likely be a material weakness. So, that's the highest level. The second tier is significant deficiency, which sounds worse than material weakness. But, it's kind of in, it merits the attention but it's probably not going to result in a material misstatement. And then you have, everything below that is kind of grouped into a controlled deficiency category, which generally is, might be orally communicated or, but not necessarily written down in the audit. So, material weaknesses and significant deficiencies get written down in the audit if you have them. So, the city has none of those for fiscal year 2024 for our audit. Thank you. So, the next slide on page is four, discuss kind of the audit process that we use. It's segmented into planning, field work and reporting. We conduct the audit mostly in the first couple of weeks of December and then we wrap up our reporting in early March. We do do some planning in the month of August, so that's kind of the timeline we use. And each one of these phases, there's bullet points here that discuss kind of the procedures that we're doing along the way. If you have questions on those, certainly, certainly ask them. Next, I'm going to cover significant audit items and actually go to page six and kind of look at your statement of net position. So, this would be to be your ending balances as of September 30th, 2024. It was a pretty routine year for the most part, there's only a few items that I think merited attention enough for me to write them down on the slide, but want to go through a few of them that we noted. Your total assets and deferred outflows were one hundred and two million as of 9/30/2024. That's an increase from ninety-eight million. The main reason from the prior year, the main reason for that increase was an asset account called construction in process. So, you had some pretty significant projects in the airport, one of which is the BLM seat base construction and heater design. That was about 1.4 million, that was significant in the airport fund. Well, project well seventeen in the water fund, which was funded in part by ARPA dollars, that was a pretty significant project, about 1.8 million as well as water line and roadway improvements. Also, I don't have it written down here, but the street projects had 1.5 million in sewer pipelines and projects out at Falcon Landing as well that were pretty significant construction in progress. So, that's an asset account that accumulates and once that asset is put in the operation, depreciation commences. But, in the meantime, it's an asset, so that definitely increased your asset base from ninety-eight million to one hundred and twenty, one hundred and two million at the end of the year. Your total net position, which is the cumulative amount of assets minus your liabilities, citywide was seventy-six point five million of that, sixty-one point six million was tied into non-liquid capital assets. So, yeah, that's your capital assets net of your accumulated depreciation and related debt. You did have some restricted funds that are the straight boiling funds, cash reserve tied into your debt. Your development availability funds are restricted and so that amounted to 4.2 million. And the residual amount calling your liquid net position citywide was 10.6 million unrestricted. So, next slide is statement of activities, so these are your revenues. So, we're talking about your balance sheet essentially in the first slide and these are your revenues and your expenditures. I'm talking about the operations in this slide. One thing that stood out was a revenue increase, you had a revenue increase in the prior year. Your revenues were 29.5 million citywide, up from 27.7 million in the prior year. And the main reason for that increase was grant revenue recognition. We recognize the grant revenues, you know, in tandem with the expenditures when we incur those ARPA dollars and we actually spend the money, so that resulted in revenue recognition for fiscal year 2024. So, that was the case in the water, street and airport funds where we really saw the increase in grant revenue, which causes the increase in revenues. Expenses did increase, there are 22.5 million citywide, up from 19.7 million, really drilling down those expenses. Most of it, I would attribute it to salary increases and also inflation, just normal inflation, it's about a 14% increase in your expenses. Nothing really stood out beyond that in terms of why expenses changed. Your overall net position increased 6.9 million in 2024. Just looking at your governmental funds excluding the enterprise funds like water, sewer, broadband, et cetera, you had 16.4 million dollars and 16.3 expenditures, which is kind of in line with how you budget governmental funds with revenue and expenditures. No, no real surprises there. The next slide is a slide I like to discuss at these presentations, your fund balance carryover. I like to look at it because where the council really has discretion in terms of how much money they carry over from fiscal year to fiscal year to balance the budget. What I typically see, and this computation is taking your unassigned fund balance and dividing it by your total annual expenditures. And the ratio I typically see is either from 20 to 40 percent depending on the type of entity that I'm looking at. Your unassigned fund balance as of September 30th, 2024 was 2.3 million dollars and your ratio was 28%. The same number last year, 9/30/2023, was about 27%. So, pretty, pretty consistent and I would say that's a pretty relatively healthy budgetary cushion. There's no real right answer there, you know, but that's two to three months' worth of annual expenditures. So, your ability to weather a storm and handle unforeseen expenditures is really good from that standpoint, looking at that metric. The next few slides are charts. The charts show revenues and expenditures in comparative form. Again, you can, you can look at your governmental fund major revenues and you can see that grant revenues were the biggest reason for the increase, potentially more than in the prior year. The next slide discusses your governmental fund major expenditures on slide 10. The biggest increase is obviously capital outlay, which varies depending on the types of projects that you have. And you had some pretty big projects, the airport, street, your governmental funds, and that's what really spiked. Also increases in public protection, I think police salaries and inflation were kind of the main reasons there. But, most everything else is pretty much in line with the prior year on the expense side. The next slide is slide 11. It shows your cumulative capital asset and long-term balances over the last five years. Your increase in the trend for capital asset would mean that you're adding more capital assets than you're depreciating. So, you've had a kind of an uptick from 2022 to 2024. At the end of 2024, you're approaching 70 million in capital assets. That's up from 60 million in the previous year. So, pretty, pretty flat before then and that kind of reflects the water projects and the airport projects that we've been discussing. The debt, debt balances have, was pretty much flat compared to last year. The trend has been decreasing since 2020. You're a little bit below eight million. That's, I think, as a flat is typically if you have new leases, new lease obligations that exceed your principal payments, then it kind of evens out a little bit. So, but it's been on a steady decline since 2020 on those lease and note table. The next slide on page 12 shows trends in capital outlay and principal payments. You can see that capital outlay really fluctuates depending on the projects that the city's undertaking. On the principal payment side, you will note that it declined from the prior year between 600,000 and 650,000 principal payments and principal and interest payments. And so, been steadily increasing prior to that but it went down this year, so very good. So, on page 13, this kind of shows a really high-level snapshot of working capital, which is used in a lot of commercial and business entities, which shows your capacity to handle bills as they become due, you know, and with the city, it's an enormous amount. When you're looking at it, the whole city rolled up, you're at 27.2 million. In the past two years, it's been around 23 and 24 million. So, quite a bit of working capital there government-wide. So, my last slide here is other communications. You, you should also have received the letter to those charged with governance. It really kind of outlines what we're supposed to communicate to those charged with governance. I will say that there were very limited journal entries and I really think that's probably the combination of Paula and Tiffany and the CPA firm Cassie and Bailey CPAs, that's virtually hard to get to audit. By the time we get those books and records, they're really clean and we know where we're going and know what we're doing and their ability to answer our questions and provide information timely is really an important part of that. We had very few adjustments that were really not material at all and so the books were really, really clean. All journal entries were posted. So, we didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we already discussed that. So, with that, I'll pause and open it up to any questions that city council asks.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Is there ever, do you guys ever include in any of your reports what you guys tested?
We include that in our audit working papers, it's quite a big file. I'm trying to think, Josh, what format that would look like in terms of what we tested. So, we test all the, we audit within levels of materiality, you know, it's actually important for you to kind of get a sense of what we're looking at. We're not, we're not counting beans, you know, we're out there and looking at high-level items. And so, we set a government-wide materiality, we look at your major funds, you know, the ones that are in separate columns and we'll set a materiality for that individual fund, you know, and we'll do, standard test the details over a lot of your balance sheet items like for cash, we'll look at reconciliations, we'll look at invoices for capital asset additions, we'll confirm debt with your lenders, we'll test deferred revenue, we'll, we'll test revenue recognition, we'll look at the classification of your net position balances. And then the operation side, we'll do some sort, like the fiber fund was the first full year, you know, we looked at the rates, looked at the billings really hard on that, the utility revenues, we calculate the billing on that and we take more of an analytical approach in testing revenues and expenditures and expenses in comparative ratio analysis and that sort of thing. So, we use some, some software to look at journal entries, look at the whole, whole level and so we do a lot, a lot of procedures and I don't want to over explain, but, but is there a specific area? Well, I think the other thing that out is we also, in addition to all of that, which is going kind of account by account, we can then all send that part of your government auditing reports, internal control reports, we're also doing just random control testing. So, that is based on statistical settings, so most of them are about 60. Sometimes they range a little higher than that, but it's looking at all checks from the beginning of the year to the end and then randomly selecting 60 doing, so there's payroll, there's dispersment testing, there's cash receipts. So, there's some control testing that's built in and some of the other is still on top of all the standard testing. I think in total, it's probably, roughly, probably about 60 hours worth of testing, I guess.
Well, Josh and Morgan, thank you guys. Craig, do we need to sign in here or?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for opening, so no problem.
Wait, you guys? I'll save right back.
Alright, thanks.
Alright. See Bud out. Hopefully, come on down. How we doing this evening?
Here, council members?
Get the troublemakers with that way. I'll squeeze in right in my pistol here. I'll see if there Bud, if you want that side. Well, I don't want to get called out, she's got an A plus up here.
Probably first off, we'll have to call and order some more blood taken from the sheriff's mouth.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Abby Jermaine with Elmen Burke, outside legal counsel for the county. Appreciate your time this evening. Our intent and hope for this conversation is just to discuss the status of implementation of the county impact fees within City of Mountain Home. This has been an issue that's been on everyone's radar for quite a while now. What we'd like to do is kind of give the council a status update of where things are at and then hopefully get a path forward that we can all agree on as far as getting these implemented sooner rather than later. I think we do have one member of the Impact Advisory Committee for Mountain Home. What I can start off with by telling the council that the last time I think we talked about this, the next action item was to get the advisory committees of both the city and the county together, as well as Glensberry, to have a discussion about implementation of the county impact fee. We have done that, we have met with both the joint committees, Elmore County, City of Mountain Home and Glensberry. And then, my understanding is that the Mountain Home Advisory Committee has met in additional time to discuss implementation of the impact fees. The reason that that is occurring is because in the impact fee statute, it does require the coordination of the impact fee committee in providing comments or recommendations to the council on adoption. So, that's why that process is being conducted. What I think we would like to do is try and get a, I'm not going to say for sure path or a absolute timeline, but to understand how we can move forward in the most efficient way on implementing fees. So, I'm, I'll definitely turn it over to Jeff, your legal counsel, to talk about next steps. But, I think from the county's perspective, we've certainly tried to answer questions of the advisory committee. At this point, I think it's really up to the city council to ask the advisory committee where they're at with this issue and then to agree on my next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, fundamentally, there were some questions, I think members of the Development Impact Advisory Committee have obtained that regarding EMS. I think, I thought occurred to me after the conclusion of the last meeting where there were some unanswered questions. Unfortunately, there was a scandal conflict because the EMS director wasn't there, but I think they're meeting again on the 13th. But, I phoned the chairman of the committee and then I let other staff know that there's nothing precluding the members of the Development Impact Advisory Committee from communicating with members of the county commission, members of the city council, members of county staff on their own. This isn't like a zoning hearing or a quasi judicial action, some legislative act, the act of advisory capacity. So, nothing precludes them from obtaining the information they need to make a decision outside of a meeting. Again, talk to each other outside of a meeting, but they can certainly get input from Allen or anyone who comes in so they can arrive at a meaningful agreement. In addition, the city staff have been providing members of our Development Impact Advisory Committee reports about billing permits and things like that. So, I'll be ready to advise them at the next meeting what they can do and if they're ready to render written comments. One of the, one of the things that came to light, which I brought up to you folks is, I don't think it's part of the statutory scheme for them to be a veto power for the city's intent to move forward on adopting or not adopting a capital approval plan. In other words, their role is to file written comments and then, and they are to be consulted with and the capital approval plan is to be developed in coordination with an impact fee advisory. Doesn't mean there has to be unanimity or anything like that. But, if we skip ahead to the actual implementation part of this, 678206, "A governmental entity that seeks to consider adoption or repeal of a capital approval plan shall hold at least one public hearing. A governmental entity shall publish a notice of the time, place and purpose of the hearing, not fewer than 15, no more than 30 days before the scheduled date in a newspaper and such notice shall include a statement that the governmental entity shall make available to the public upon request, the following." And so, when you think we're close enough, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is you can schedule a public hearing to consider adoption of a capital approval plan. It requires you to have the capital approval plan, propose land use assumptions and a statement that any member of the public affected can come and testify. And that's where I think you can protect the role of the Impact Advisory Committee. If there's a division in it or if there's disagreement or something like that, they're more than welcome to come and apply and say their piece. As long as they file written comments or have failed to file written comments, nothing precludes you from at least being ready as long as within 30 days you have those documents, proposal and new assumptions and a copy of the proposed CIP. So, what I've done is to, and I'll turn it over to you, Abby, if you have the comments.
Well, I was just going to say, in a lot of those lines, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to Jeff's point, I think really what we need to do is look at setting a date for that hearing, for the adoption of the CIP, because I think that will put time constraints around both
around both the advisory committee as far as if they want to make formal written comments to the City Council, but also, it'll put us on a timeline to make sure that we have the necessary documents ready to actually present and be heard in the public hearing. So, my suggestion would be to actually pick a date for that public hearing, so that we are all on the same page of when that's going to be heard.
Council, Gary?
Is it our public hearing, cities or counties?
So, Jeff can answer that, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, Jeff can answer that from the city's perspective. My understanding is it would be the City Council adopting the CIP, a portion of the CIP specifically related to EMS. I believe that the county also may take advantage of that public hearing and might adopt some amendments to its CIP at the same time. So, I think it would likely, hopefully, be a joint, a joint public hearing, if not simultaneous, for both governmental entities.
Jeff, I thought, I'm going to be wrong, I thought we were kind of at a standstill because we weren't quite sure that the CIP, the county's CIP was correct, or something along those lines. What was the?
So, just, all, what we need to do is adopt a CIP that's for EMS, and so, that may require the county to amend theirs, or in any event, what we're going to adopt requires a public hearing, and so, to the extent that they are contemplating amendments to theirs, that can be done at the same time.
So, when we go to a public hearing to adopt the CIP, their CIP, we can, we can take out portions of it, such as the jail? We can just strictly focus on the EMS portion of it?
Or, or as, or they will create a separate CIP that will be heard at this public hearing that is just for EMS.
And you guys are working on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Garby, yes, we are certainly happy to prepare a separate CIP that addresses EMS for the purposes of getting that portion of this moving forward.
And so, because that would be an amendment to their CIP, you would trigger that here? And, Shorter, you'll have our, all ours fixed as well, right? Because you were working on fixing it.
Yes.
It was the 20-year, or no, it was the, yes, it was 20.
Yeah.
And the land use, whatever, the land use assumptions, yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to setting a date today. What would be a good date? Well, I, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, I believe we do need some time for the county to coordinate on its CIP. 30 days?
Well, so, we can't, we can set a public hearing, if we publish it, it can be no longer than 30 days out, but I don't, I don't see, so, Ms. Jermaine and I have some work to do on proposed intergovernmental agreement in addition to ordinance, and setting the date, 30 days from now, I don't see, I don't think that's feasible. I would say 60 or 90 days would be the soonest.
Sorry, you're going to have to do this whole round and round again for the jail, is what I'm hearing. Because you're dialed in on EMS.
Right.
And I get it, and I know I'm going to upset everybody. We're pushing the jail off, but sooner or later, it's got to come back to the table. So, we're going to go round and round again.
Yep.
Commissioner Hooper, so, bear with me here, I can cover my thoughts here. Let's just get something on the table, get it moving.
I am.
Because it was a general consensus across the board, in the county and the city, that the jail needed, the jail CIP needs some work, and the last thing that you guys want to do is implement the CIP and impact fees and have to pay that back. So, let's get at least something. The EMS is, I listen to you guys the most.
I just don't want to see another two years.
Right. Respect that, help us that.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Kind of going down the line with you here, is I don't think I really understand why we, why the jail got pushed off, and why we can't attack that. If we're going after our CIPs and public hearings, why can't it be attacked at the same time?
Mr. Mayor, member of council, from my perspective, the concerns or the comments that we have heard from the council and from the Impact Advisory Committee relates to the numbers and data that was used to support the impact fee for the jail portion of the CIP. So, from my perspective, if that is to be explored, it's going to require a consultant relooking at those numbers. That's going to be a longer process than getting the EMS fees adopted.
So, where's the committees use a number?
Yes.
A lower number?
So, Mr. Mayor, council, Commissioner Hooper, we couldn't just pick a lower number. We would have to have the number evaluated and supported by the information that we have. So, that's why it's not something that we could just advise on a lower number. It's a statutory requirement that the number be supported by substantial data. So, that's why I believe that it would take a longer period of time to get those numbers reevaluated than it would just implement EMS impact fees. Now, concurrently, there's nothing to stop us from getting, getting that, the jail impact fees reevaluated ASAP and working it simultaneously.
That's my question.
But as far as implementation, if we don't separate the CIPs, then we're going to be delayed in implementing the EMS portion of it.
Shorter, what, why was it 60 to 90 days? Why is it so long?
Well, we have to have, we have to have prepared, we have to have prepared land use assumptions.
Right.
So, those, those land use assumptions, Ms. Jermaine and I are working on whether we can find valid ones that cover the statutory 20-year period within the existing documents or not. If not, we'll have to make them. That could take some time, and they have to be adopted by our planning zoning commission and the county's committee. That shouldn't take long, they're developing coordination, so we've got to have that document ready along with the revised CIP. So, however long it takes to edit the CIP, make it an EMS one alone, plus some land use assumptions, however long it takes to do that. I don't know, I could do it in a morning of coffee, but I need a holiday to do it this way.
Okay, and then, what should we call it?
Yeah.
What's reasonable, talk about it. 60 days?
I think we can absolutely do it within 60 days. And I would, I would say, you know, I think, I think the 30 to 60 days is reasonable. We run into hiccups, we can extend that, right, as long as we're notice, giving the proper notice requirements, but again, I think, I think having a date on the books will push this forward.
Just a follow-up to my last question. Am I hearing you right that the consensus is that the consultant that helped find these numbers was way off when it came to, when it came to the jail, and so, that, no?
No, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I appreciate that question. I think it's a good one to answer for the record. I don't believe that there were miscalculations in the jail CIP. What I do think is that there, there might be factors that could more accurately represent the projected need for the facility, and so, it is worth evaluating before implementation.
It just deserves more time?
Yes, I would say that.
Council, Gary?
So, May 13th would put us about 60 days, that would be our first meeting of May.
Is that this Jeff? Let's do it. Good. Yeah? Councilmember Brennan, sorry. What did you say? Council, sir, hands. Council, what?
Or the, or the 27th would be more. 27th of May, for sure.
27th, I like that.
I say the 13th.
Count, Commissioner. Don't figure it out. I, I think they've got it. And then, to do a special planning and zoning, we could, will that expedite it?
Yep.
Just, just one other question. I think, Jeff, you made it clear that if there was any questions or anything that we needed to answer on our side, please ask now, don't wait till we have another meeting in progress. I've got a few questions. There's something that we need to answer, or work that needs to be done on our behalf, let's get them out on the table as quickly as we can, and we'll get you an answer for something.
So, just, just so you know, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county commission, to the extent members of that advisory committee will take your call, you're free to call them and tell them what you're, what you're asking, what you want them to look at. They are free to call and ask you questions, same thing you do. Want to do that, you can as well.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think it would also be helpful, if it's the council's prerogative, to in some way inform or make it noted to the advisory committee that you do intend to hold a public hearing on the CIP on May 13th, and that if they do have, do desire to file comments or provide comments to the council, to please get those to you before that, or provide them at that public hearing date. I think that way, everyone is on the same page that this is occurring, and they have the opportunity to comment back to it.
It's probably 13. You got that one in there?
Yeah.
Council, Brennan?
Just a question, to the extent that this meeting is going to occur, is it just a quick vote, or is it going to be a long discussion on something that may require an individual meeting? I'm not sure, like, what the actual action item looks like or the discussion intended.
Shorter, what's the? So, within no less than 15, no more than 30 before the hearing, you publish in the newspaper, you hold the hearing. If the governmental entity makes material changes in the CIP or amendment, then further notice and hearing may be required, but after that, you can vote to adopt it.
So, in reality, the notice is simply for a public hearing. It'll take as long as it takes for people to give comment. We will all have seen this document long before it gets to a public hearing.
Right.
It should be a format.
And then, to the extent we can do it, if that's what you want to do, and the thing is going to survive the public comment, or your acceptance of it, or whatnot, we should also probably have, at the same time, the amendment adding the steps, we can preload with the P&amp;Z commission to add it as a component of our city comp plan, we can have an amendment to our ordinance drafted. The fees, the fee numbers have to be in our ordinance, so we would have an amendment drafted for that ordinance, and we can stack those public hearings on the same day. And then, and then, we also will have to start drafting just intergovernmental agreements that dictates how we process the fees, whether it's a one-stop shop or whatever, to pay them, who's going to be responsible for adjudicating disputes, that sort of, if she and I will take what was left of the, what we got before, see if we can fix it to match this process.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think the takeaway there is a lot of these documents exist. Some of them, you know, the land use assumptions, we need to discuss that, but really, what this will be is tweaking or amending those documents and getting them before the council and the county. So, I don't think we're starting from scratch, is the point I want to make there.
Councilwoman Brennan?
So, and then, after the public hearing, what would be the expected timeframe to implementation?
So, I think as soon as we had the intergovernmental agreement in place, and after the ordinances are adopted, hopefully, again, if we can run some of this concurrently and simultaneously, I think that it should happen right around that same timeframe.
The ordinance adoption, this is a weird one with that, it's in, it's in this impact fee statute, can't be done on the same day. You have to read it, you have to have two, at least two readings. But, yeah.
So, two to a council meeting, okay, so we're aware of the three reading. Okay, and Councilmember Gary?
So, we, we, us, the council, have, we have not been able to meet with the Impact Fee Committee at all, county or city. Is that something we can do to get our questions answered before we get to this date?
Sure.
Because otherwise, we're going to be here.
They're meeting Thursday night, if you want to come. Sometimes I bring food. Hint, hint.
I just think it would be good for all of us to be in the, you know, get our questions out, rather be with you guys, because I know there's going to be a lot of questions before we all say yes, or I believe there will be, I should say.
Sorry, Abby and Jeff, will you make it bulletproof? This will be the first one that a city and a county has done, and so, I don't want it coming back, or us getting sued, or writing checks back, or make sure it's bulletproof. You know what I mean?
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, please.
That's what we're doing. It's only so, I mean, we want to sue, but we can defend.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would be very bad at my job if I called any, any piece of legal law bulletproof. There's always a way to challenge something, but I believe that we can do our due diligence and ensure that we are adequate in all the statutory requirements.
Councilwoman Brennan?
If we're stacking some really big topics together to do one, a couple of public hearings in one night, I'll let Jeff answer this, but I feel like the latter date would maybe help with that. March 20.
27th would be a lighter calendar.
No, not a lighter calendar, just maybe a little more time to do the stacking and have multiple topics in one.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, another suggestion would be to keep the May 13th to handle some of the items that we're ready to go with on that date, and then to also plan the May 27th either as the second reading.
That's what I'm saying.
Or, or to handle other items that are finalized on the 13th.
And then, pardon me, but with two mandatory readings, what happens if there's some kind of contact in between the two?
What do you contact?
Ex parte?
Yeah, or somebody submits a letter to the city, or?
Legislative.
Not, it's legislative, so you're fine.
Okay.
The only thing that would kick it back is if there's truly a material change and all of that, and then, I think a bulletproof statement is, like, no material changes. By the time I get to that point.
All right. Council, anything else? All right, Commissioners, thank you guys.
Thank you.
5:47. Recognize the person, they have a 20-foot gap to speak.
You're here to tell us what food you can bring us every time? I figure we could discuss what we're going to chat.
Brennan McCarthy, I would, coming into this council tonight, since I am on the Impact Committee, and I figure, no one has really reached out to us or asked for any updates or anything like that, so I figure, since we're on that topic, I would come and discuss. This, the notion that keeps being made of that we've been working on this two years, I would like to set the record straight for our Impact Committee, because I do not want the members of our committee to complain of something that was not within our control. We did not receive this until November on this, so this notion of two years that we've been working on, it's not with our Impact Day Committee, so I want to set the record straight on that. There is history, and I think Jeff will attest to this, it was brought up at the county commissioner meeting on Friday. This process started with doing an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city, looking at doing impact fees, which can't be done that way. So, that's why this whole thing has been this long. Our committee is working on, we set up the following meeting for February 19th, to ask our questions, didn't work out, we were all here, don't know why, but our committee has been committed to working on this and getting our questions answered, so we, as a recommending body, can give you a sound recommendation. Councilmember Garby, I appreciate your comments of asking to come, and we can chat, because I think that would be great, so that we can get everything on the record and we can discuss. Because again, I'm tired of this two-year thing, or we're working on this, when, well, let's get it on the record. There is a lawsuit back in Eastern Idaho for a CIP that is done by the same consultant that did the county and the city CIP. I don't know if that information has been given to you, but that is something that we have brought up in our committee, and it's something that we are concerned about. Frankly, I don't want lawsuits. Sure you guys don't. They're tired of having executive sessions about pending lawsuits and that. So, we are trying to do it correctly. Give us a time. It's only been November. Do it. I mean, you guys are the deciding body, I respect that. It's your decision. So, if you want to continue, go. But it talks about in the Idaho Code that these divacs are legislated by Idaho Code to be involved with the drafting of these CIPs. That wasn't done on the city side? We're trying to do that with this County. This is the first one that will be done in the state. I don't want to be part of the first one and then turn around and it's wrong and then we're refunding the money on that. I mean, let's just do it sound. Can we just slow down and just work this out together? That's all I'm asking. So, wanted to set the record a little straight, open to having you guys come. Let's have the discussion so we can get the County Commissioners and everybody on it. Everyone in our committee is of the impression in his voice that we do want impact fees collected for the County. So, we're willing to do it, but we have to make sure it's sound, especially being the first one. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Uh, six o'clock.
And what I'll do is I'll send them a calendar by, or, I'm sorry.
Well, we need to, if we're going out, we have to.
Right.
We have to know who's coming.
I can't. Okay, thanks. Brennan. We'll still send them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down, sir. Oh, sorry. Come on down.
Let her go first.
Yep, ma'am, you're good.
Mr. Mayor, Housemembers, my name is Helen Stoles. I'm speaking to you today as an acting member of this community by volunteering at the Elks Lodge. We helped start programs and supported our community by attending various events and venues. But the one thing I'm most involved with is the Desert Canyon Golf Course. I am a secretary for the Mountain Home Ladies Golf Association and participate in leagues and tournaments at the golf course. I'm also a committee member of the Elks Lodge Golf Tournament. With the changes happening over the last year at the golf course, I am concerned that how the City Council will support our leagues, our tournaments, the golfers, the golf staff and the golf staff at the golf course. Our golf association has three leagues, Tuesday Day, Tuesday Night and Thursday Day. We have a total of 85 members which I'm in contact with constantly. Each league has a chairperson that organizes the league, turns the fees and starts the time. In the past, all leagues went through the Pro Shop, which ensured league days and times are secured, fees were paid. No other golfers were allowed to play during our time so that we could finish in time a lot. My questions, is the golf course manager responsible for ensuring our dates and times are secured for the duration of our league play? Or will we have to secure the dates and times on the city's website? Will the league fee still be the league chairman's responsibility and acceptable to the city? Will other golfers be allowed to play during our designated times? And who will decide that? Who will be responsible ensuring our Elks Lodge Golf Tournament will have carts available and our tournament scoring for each participant? Will there be enough staff at the course on tournament day? Or does each tournament chair have to ensure they have extra personnel to complete these activities? Why would the fees change for tournament play without golfers being notified? This information was not an item on the list of fees provided by the city. Our season passes have always been valid through the weekends if we had a seven-day pass and we'd like to see this continue. Thank you very much for your time.
Sorry, Marcella, next one.
I apologize. No, you're fine, we're good. I'm going to stand for a moment because it's going to hurt me to sit down and get back. My name is Roger McClain. I'm a new member in the city and I just moved in at 130 Baker Drive. And I'm a member of the DAV program, also a member of the VFW, all of those, those con proportions and whatnot. Served some time over in Soda Springs as a news editor. We had our own TV station over there for helping the city and things like that. Me just being a new member in the city, I wanted to, you know, express my gratitude, say thanks for allowing me to be here. If there's anything that I can help, I intend to be a current member or some of the Council here.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you for your time.
Marcella? She got you closer to the seat.
I know it, but probably as close as I'm, yeah. You never know.
Mayor Sykes and Councilmembers, first and foremost, we'd like to extend our sincere gratitude for your approval of the Nicholas Truba Memorial Golf Scramble to be held once again this year on July 12th, 2025. Your continued support means so much to us and we are truly grateful for the opportunity to honor our son in this meaningful way. This will be the fourth annual, we hope, Nicholas Truba Memorial Golf Scramble, an event not only celebrates Nicholas's love for golf, but also brings together family, friends and the community for a day of remembrance, connection and giving back, which is most important. Over the past three years, this event has grown into something truly special and we are honored to continue Nicholas's legacy through it. We understand that as outlined in the recent email we received, the tournament organization is responsible for covering the greens fees, cart rentals for each participant with the payment due within 48 hours of the tournament's conclusion. We want to assure you that these requirements are absolutely not an issue as this is the same process we have successfully followed for the past three years. We fully accept and acknowledge this responsibility and appreciate the city's continued partnership in ensuring a smooth and successful event. However, there is one concern that we would like to formally address. The new policy stating that season passes will not be valid for tournament play and that all greens fees for each participant must be paid with tournament fees. As the organizer of my son's memorial golf scramble, I take issue with this policy change, as do many others involved. The Nicholas Truba Memorial Golf Scramble has been able to donate over $17,000 to this community over the past three years. These funds have supported organizations that Nicholas was passionate about, including, but not limited to, Mountain Home High School Golf Team, Mountain Home Fire Department Burnout Fund, Elmore County Sportsman, Mountain Home Parks and Rec, Mountain Home High School Autopia Class, Elmore County Spanneuter and Positivity Rescue. By enforcing this new policy, approximately $1,600 will be taken away from our community instead and instead directed to the city. Additionally, there has been confusion among season pass holders regarding whether they are required to pay both the tournament fee and greens fees. Many of those I have spoken with have raised concerns and I've assured them that this is not how our scramble has ever operated. Our scramble fee has always included greens fees for all participants. We are respectfully requesting that those who have already paid the city for their season pass have proportioned their fee that is included in our scramble registration directed entirely to be in bed rather than being collected by the city. This ensures that the funds raised will fully point to charities and organizations Nicholas supported rather than diminishing the impact of this memorial event. We kindly ask that this policy be reconsidered, not only for the Nicholas Truba Memorial Golf Scramble, but also for those other fundraising tournaments scheduled to give back to our community as it negatively affects the charitable contributions made through these events. We appreciate your time and consideration and would love to discuss further if necessary. Thank you again for your continued support in keeping Nicholas's memory alive and for allowing this special event to continue in his honor.
I did. Karen, Council, I'm here representing the Elks Lodge 2276 Golf Tournament. It is the 16th this year and I have been on the committee for the last 10 years. Our first tournament only raised 500, excuse me, $500 to benefit the Mountain Home High School Golf Team. Over the years, it has grown immensely to benefit many local youth groups and the veteran projects and programs. This tournament is crucial for the Elks Lodge to give back to our community, especially to our youth. It has run very smoothly over the years due to the outstanding help of TJ and his staff. Our accomplishments include the Veteran Memorial at the cemetery, baseball youth, Optimistic High Thomas Hacker Middle School ground equipment, playground equipment, Mountain Home Library, Mountain Home High School Golf Junior Team, kids' golf equipment for the schools, Scouts, Troops 195, Mountain Home High Hopes, Wotiki Kids Camp, Elmore County 4-H Wine Club, Elmore County Junior Rodeo, in addition to many more important programs. Our committee is very concerned this year due to the costing greens fees. Why would a golfer who has a season pass have to pay green fees again? Is that not the double dipping standards? This deter golfers, this will deter golfers from playing and it will take a big chunk of our profit to pay the city. Moreover, the carts are $21 per seat. The lodge tournament stand will lose $1,600 right off the bat with what we charge and what we have to pay the city in greens fees. If this rate remains, we will be pricing our golfers out of playing in our tournaments. Also, now the golfers have to contact committee members, sign up. They cannot contact TJ or the staff members, sign up team. Then, they have to contact Jeff at the golf course to reserve a cart if they need one. The committee could not see pricing this tournament so high that it includes a cart with the green fees as we are in fear of losing teams to this charity event. We stand to lose money and we are all, and we are all doing the work. So, why can't the city golf course come up with a tournament fee with a cart at the discount? If the Elks Tournament does not do well this year, it will be our last tournament. It saddens me for the youth groups and the veterans that we are trying to help who have no other resources but this tournament and making this money. Thank you, and that was written by Teresa Guarri Wilson and she is the chairperson of the committee. Any questions? I mean, I can answer a lot of stuff. Hi. Terry Mandu, gentlemen along here. Bear with me.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, golf course. I think some of the issues are coming from maybe lack of communication with organizations and leagues and such. I'll share my first little bit and I've kind of broken this up into three different sections. While, excuse me, grown glasses. While reading tonight's packet, I learned that a weekday pass, the one that I just purchased, now excludes Friday play. Keep in mind, Monday and Friday are the only weekdays without scheduled leagues and the days that are open to the public all day long. This change was not shared by staff when I made my purchase at City Hall or is physically noted on my little card. Had I known this information, I would not have made the purchase. Communication is critical out at Desert Canyon. There's been so many changes this year in how tournaments are going to be structured, the fee structure, who's going to do what. We've got to get it ramped up because we're about ready to get into the season. Okay, enough ranting. I'm here as a golf tournament committee member and tournament participant. Over the last decade, multiple charitable organizations have hosted scrambles at the course. We've worked in partnership with the golf pro, the city and restaurant staff to ensure successful events for all involved. In past years, committee members were allowed to focus on organizing, selling sponsorships and fundraising via raffles and auctions. The pro shop staff registered the teams, collected greens fees and sold cart seats to those who needed them and we function as a team. On average, about 30% of tournament patrons are season pass holders. In the past, participants with season passes had their green fees paid directly to the organization hosting the tournament. The reason for this was the city had already collected greens fees when the season pass was sold. To my understanding, that will change this year with tournament fees being expressly excluded from both season pass holders and weekday pass holders. As a committee member, we rely on those proceeds to donate back into our community and we urge the Council to reconsider. Okay? Then I was at a meeting here a little month or so ago and there was some conversation about maybe limiting tournaments. Golf scrambles historically have been a great way to fundraise for local organizations. In a prior City Council meeting, there was a discussion that tournaments caused too much damage to the golf course and that there should be fewer held. Councilwoman Garvey asked for data to support that request and I've yet to see any data that is related to course damage. Approximately 40 tournaments were hosted in 2024 with an additional 14 in-house tournaments at Desert Canyon. In my observation, the prior management did an exceptional job at monetizing the golf course. The in-house tournaments appear to be at the greatest risk of being eliminated, which would be a shame as they typically fall on holidays and Sundays when course traffic is traditionally slower. If any of these events go away, what is the city's plan to generate an equal amount of revenue at Desert Canyon? Jared, if you've not been out there, his restaurant looks amazing and he's made a significant investment along with the city and they're counting on that traffic in order to be profitable. Fewer tournaments will have a negative impact on all of us who participate. We hope to work with the city to ensure these events continue to be successful as they benefit all of us and our community. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I'm not, just for the sake of everybody's time, I'm not going to reiterate everything that everybody has just said, but those are my exact same thoughts and that is what I came here to talk about. I'm not going to repeat it, it was loud and clear. But one of the things I do want to say as the golf chair for the St. Luke's Tournament is the things that we raise money for that affect this community affects the health of our community. So, a couple of years ago, all of our golf tournament money went to bring a 3D mammogram bus to Elmore County, which is supposed to be here in the next few months. So, Elmore County does not have 3D mammogram capabilities. The hospital can't hold the 3D mammogram machine and that's why we had to do the bus. It was almost $2 million. So, that's one of the things. And then, in the last year and then this year, our funds are going to go to new state-of-the-art echocardiogram machines for heart health. So, it affects, it affects our community health-wise as well. Terry had a really good comment about the new concessionaire. I mean, just for an example, and I chaired the Chamber of Golf Tournaments for 15 years, 20 years in the past and, you know, the average amount we paid to curlies at the time was around $3,000 and that did not include drinks. So, I mean, that's, they really count on these tournaments to help their, their business. And then, the last thing I want to say is we were told, that one of our golf committee chairperson or committee members was told by your golf management that he will absolutely not be doing anything at all that has anything to do with the tournaments. He's not going to prepare the carts, he's not going to put the names on the carts, he's not going to tally the scores at the end, that's all up to us. So, you know, in the past, I mean, TJ was, was the best thing that we ever had. But in the past, not only did TJ do all those things, but he also advertised for it. not only did TJ do all those things, but he also advertised for us. He got the word out for us. He talked to people. He signed up teams. He recruited people, and he also donated personally, out of his own pocket, to the tournaments. So you know, not that we can't do it, but it really will affect how the tournaments are run. So, thank you.
Do you have any clarification? Not a conversation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, for Paula, for Tiff, for who, Paula? Paula. Oh, Paula Rick, okay. You just need...
Which one?
So Paula Rick.
Which one?
We need some clarification.
I don't want to ignore it, I'm Paul.
And we don't engage, but he needs some clarification.
Yeah, not a conversation. Did you say that you're donating your proceeds of your golf tournament to bring the mammogram bus here? Like you have to pay to bring the bus?
Well, we pay a portion of it. St. Luke's paid. I mean, we raised, I want to, don't quote me because I don't have that in front of me, but I want to say we raised over a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars towards, was it more? You were on the hospital board, what was?
It was like two fifty.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards it, and then St. Luke's paid the difference to bring it out.
I'll talk more about that in our agenda item. That confuses me, that you're paying to bring medical stuff, and then I'm assuming each person has to pay for the medical care.
Your insurance.
So I'll bring that up.
That's not...
Okay, we're digressing. We've got to get back to Paula. Okay, thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
Here, believe.
Paula. I'm going to change the subject. I'm just going to give you some stats on our food distribution that we have every month. So for 2024, our annual stats, we did eleven food distributions with a hundred and thirty-four volunteers that provided three hundred and forty-eight community service hours, two hundred and one thousand pounds of food was donated and passed out, and three point eight thousand households.
That's amazing.
Anybody else like to eat up? All right, we've got to run down to consent, or sorry, there's a conflict interest declaration. Has any council member received information pertaining to otherwise any conflict with any person regarding any items on this district council? So please set forth nature of contact. Councilwoman Warble.
Yeah, I spoke with Terry Manduka and received an email from Helen White-Stoltz exactly what she presented tonight for New Business Number Four. To get those questions answered, it will be my goal to ask those questions and see if admin here can answer them for us today. And I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Garvey for putting New Business Number Four on the agenda so we can get all these questions answered.
Councilman Harjo?
I as well received an email from Helen Stoltz regarding the comments that she made when she commented on it.
Councilwoman Garvey?
I have informally talked to a lot of people, but formally I received Helen Stoltz's email, and I have talked to Terry, and I've talked to a lot of people. I don't even know what to say. It's all regarding the golf course.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Will not change my opinion.
I received the same email from Helen. I also received an email from William Lamb yesterday about action item, sorry, non-action item number three on New Business. I did not respond to either of those in writing or verbal. I'm not biased to anyone.
I also received a William Lamb's email.
Thanks, Brennan. Bye-bye.
All righty. We'll just run down the consent agenda, Council. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
On the bills, it says March 11, '26. That should be '25. I was just a year ahead, guys.
Just write the check.
I caught it, so.
So, Council, do you have any questions? I know it's a pretty short agenda. Anything on that that you want more clarification? If not, do I have a motion to accept the council agenda, or sorry, the consent agenda? Mayor. Councilman Harjo?
If I may make a motion to change some verbiage in the meeting minutes for February 25, 2025, the nomination. The statement says Councilman Harjo disclosed that he attended a county commission meeting as a citizen under Old Business Item Number One, present a document that pertains to the water study. I'd like to clarify that, that I didn't present any document, but I was there to witness a presentation of that document.
You go to Tiff.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garvey?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with changes that Councilman Harjo just presented. As written, let me verify, see if it's not seconded.
Seconded. It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not called. She, Councilwoman Garvey.
Aye.
Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Warble.
Aye.
All right. We're going to run down to Old Business, the decision to reconsider allowing city staff to proceed with the request proposed process for engineering study to relocate and extend a portion of the road. Councilwoman Garvey.
Mayor, thank you. And Council, thank you guys for letting me add this back on to discuss this. I was not at that meeting on January 14th. I wrote down my thoughts. I don't like to read from my thoughts, but I wanted to make sure I said everything I listed. So anyway, for over two years... Okay, back to this. For over two years, I have been working with Kevin Jazz, and his team, and learning about what the conceptual land for expansion of the road looks like. There's a lot of meetings, it was a lot of work, so great before I realized that I probably should be doing that. Anyway, thankfully, the council saw the benefit of this as we worked through it, and we were able to do a land exchange, land swap. Now, we need to start planning for this land. It takes a lot of time to get RFPs and plans in place to actually do something with this land. And although we don't currently have an Economic Development Department working on these things and these projects, we do have people in the city that are working to move forward on these projects that need to be worked on. So I was a little bit confused of why we put this RFP on the back burner. These projects directly can reduce our property taxes, they bring jobs to our community, they bring a myriad of things, along with expanding our runway, which I don't know if any of you have watched Caldwell, they're getting full, they need a relief airport, and we have that. Mountain Home doesn't have a lot of things to offer, but we have that, and we now have the land. So with that being said, there was mention that we needed to wait until the budget season. Well, if we don't have an idea of even how much it's going to cost to have an RFP in place, how are we going to implement this in our budget come June or July? The cost associated with moving the railroad needs to be sought after. I'm asking for a reconsideration to at least allow the city to opt for the RFP so that we can keep the momentum going on the runway expansion and the railroad movement.
Mayor.
Yeah, so I was the one that made the motion to kick the Kent Town Road, and it was till October, I believe, right, Tiffany? Isn't that what it was, October this year? It wasn't May or June, so it's even further down, because there was no mention of feasibility study. I wanted to know how much that would potentially cost the taxpayer, or yeah, we know those can be pricey. That's kind of where I stand. And the other thing, too, was with potentially two big ticket items coming down the road with our wastewater issue and dispatch issue, it just seemed like another thing that would be a high expense, but not top priority, in my opinion.
Mayor.
Council, Tiff, go ahead.
Councilwoman Warble, yes, you're correct. It was October 1st. To understand the cost of the study, we have to do the proposals to get that cost. So that is why we have staff asked to go out for RFP, so people would supply us the feasibility studies, and we would know those costs to then adequately budget for them and decide whether you want to kick the can further down the road or budget for it. And it would, more than likely, reality is, it's going to be phased out. We're not going to be able to afford any bit of this in one bite. It will be several years of budgeting. So that's all I had to add regarding that.
Councilwoman Garvey?
That's really what I was just going to say. The feasibility study, we're not even to that point yet. We don't have an RFP yet. The RFP costs us nothing to go out and get. Essentially, what it is, we're asking for interest from companies or groups, and this is a specialty project. Moving a railroad is not something that we're going to get Joss Smith down the road to do. And so if we don't start working on some of this, then I really just have to question, why did we even, why did we even take this land on? Why did we even have this plan if we're not even going to possibly start working on it? So I just ask that, again, so the feasibility study will happen after the RFP, but we can't even get the feasibility study until we have the RFP. So I'm just amassing for reconsideration that we allow the city to opt for RFP. And so therefore, I would like to make a motion that we approve the city to seek an RFP for the runway or railroad movement.
Mayor. Councilman Harjo?
Sorry, Councilwoman Garvey, I didn't mean to jump in the middle of the motion. I have one question to make of staff throughput and hours. I think that was my concern the last time. Does staff have the bandwidth to tackle this and other things at this juncture? So, that's great. My original question back when we first deliberated this was, do we have the bandwidth to tackle this and other things at this moment?
You know what? I'll take notice on this one. I don't need to ask for RFP, but I wanted the council buy-in, and I asked you guys, and I did with the wishes of the council, and that's why we did go out for it. We have the bandwidth, and I'm not speaking for Tiff, because obviously Tiff's going to have to pull that train car down the track. So do you feel that you can put out the RQ with current staff?
Mayor Council, we've been working on land exchange for the growth of Mountain Home for over a year and a half. I have the bandwidth to do that, to see the future, or thought you all supported us as staff and presented to you to do the land swap. So, yeah, I do. And like I spoke at the January 14 meeting, it's not going to be published and out on the streets in the next two weeks. It would take a little bit of time. Councilwoman Garvey is absolutely right. It's a specialty trade, so it'll be finally rolled very similar to railroad parks that will be out, and it will be out for probably eight to 10 weeks on the streets to get a good response.
So I have a motion to go out for RQ, or RFP, sorry, Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not called. I'll call up the question. Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
I did not ask any questions, but I also believe that the city is getting a little too deep in the projects, and I can understand the argument, right? We're just asking for something that's not going to cost us anything. But I also don't believe this is the right timing.
Can I vouch one last thing?
You can vouch one last thing?
Mayor, Council, you at least have a number to then add inflation to, to plan for the future for the next group of city residents. You at least be able to say, hey, we did it in 2025, and it was, I don't know, a million dollars.
I'll come back to you, Councilwoman.
Only for the benefit of it not costing us anything, but I'll tell you on the record right now, I'm not likely to vote in favor of actually spending money on this when we get the project back right away. So, although I, but don't lose your breath with me later.
Thank you.
Run down to Old Business, Action Item, Delivery and Decision, Edit, Potential Approval. Dylan, IDWR letter. Councilwoman Warble?
Yes, thank you. Paul, did Jeff do the changes on this?
He did.
Okay, he's on.
Yes, I'm on Terry.
Oh.
You have a point, too.
Can I imagine what's in red is what he recommended to omit?
I imagine, yeah.
I mean, I read it over, I talked a little bit with him as well. I'm glad it's here for us to review. I support it. That's pretty much all. I just want to make sure that it got on the agenda and that we can move forward with it.
A little bit of motion?
I just want to see if someone wants to mention it.
Mayor. Councilman Harjo?
Some of the language in here under pressurized irrigation starts to go down the road of detailing what the city could consider on a case-by-case basis for existing subdivisions, mirroring the similarity of what Fiber LED One is for pressurized irrigation in existing subdivisions. I think that's the language that I don't know that I'm comfortable in having in this document from the perspective of understanding what an undertaking in LED One has been. One of the lessons learned there, I think, is this pressurized irrigation concept may be more suited to new development, industrial, common spaces like parks. I don't, from my perspective, I don't see the feasibility in even citing that here on potential in this letter back to the county slash the state, but everything else, not good luck.
Mayor.
Council.
That was exactly my, those were my concerns when we had that meeting a few weeks ago, and they're conceptually designing pressurized irrigation for our city, and then it also, again, comes down to the cost, maintenance and operation of individual pressurized irrigation systems will be the responsibility of the city. And I just think if we're simply signing a letter of support, that language goes a little too far, and I'm not, I would like to see that all taken out. Mayor.
Councilwoman Warble?
I agree.
I'll take that.
To admit that, yes, okay.
Okay. Councilman Brennan?
I see clarification on how much you're looking to accommodate this.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Warble.
There's actually quite a bit. There's several paragraphs in here that I am not comfortably signing over. It's not a binding agreement, however, they, you know, it's like they said, oh, in 2017, you guys gave support to file water rights on our behalf. Again, you know, I just think, speaking of getting too far with these on projects, I just think we're getting too far with these on projects, and this one is not, not comfortable signing this one. I'd be happy to... Or edit it. So we'll pull and go. Mayor.
Councilwoman Warble?
So where else are you looking at? I know I'm calling other stuff, sorry. Because what Councilman Harjo mentioned is just taking out a first paragraph on the pressurized irrigation, secondarily eleven, and then also the existing at the top.
Where else? Well, I would...
Councilwoman Garvey?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I would encourage, actually, that we all sit down and read this again. It's, there's quite a few areas in here that are language that's, in my opinion, somewhat binding to the city. It's not supporting the project in general, it's getting into the fine details of how we can use it.
So is this something Council could send to Tiff with your edits, and then she can send that out with all the edits and after, obviously? I think legal's all right with it, but is that something Council could do?
Take the rip pen, do it. Yeah, just cross it out and send it to them.
Is Council amiable to that one?
Yes.
Mayor. Just to the record, I don't have any problem with the letter. I don't think there's anything absolutely binding on us in here unless I'm totally missing it. It's all just a kind of a... It's all just a kind of a wish list and a possibility, and I don't, I don't think there's anything that says the city will do this. So, I, um, has there been a motion on the table at all?
No.
Can I make a motion? It's an action item.
Yep. It's an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter from Dylan Lawrence with whole city legal adjustment.
Been a motion made, any seconds?
Mayor? Councilman Harjo?
Quick question of the poll. In the passage that states, secondarily, the city considers this on a case-by-case basis for existing subdivisions, while funding for pressurized distribution systems to serve existing subdivisions might be more of a challenge and potentially be accomplished using grants along through local improvement districts. Obviously, that is, at the high level conceptual, if we don't have a current desire for that aspect of it, I don't know. Is there risk in pulling that out?
No, just pull it out. If it doesn't coincide with what you think we're going to be doing, then eliminate.
Yeah. I know there's a motion on the floor, but I guess I'll make a comment. I will support tonight we take that part out. Just right.
Mayor? Councilman Harjo?
I have a problem. Concur with that.
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
I'll adjust my motion, end my motion. If what I'm hearing from the other two is basically to eliminate the use of existing residential subdivisions, keep the rest of it as for new subdivisions. And the rest, that's what we previously stated.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Garvey?
Okay, so at the end of this letter, just reading this out loud, maybe I'm reading into this too much. In summary, I want to reiterate that the city is supportive of the county's efforts to bolster the water supply in the city of Mountain Home area. All fine. The city will continue to cooperate in these efforts as projects evolve, and we look forward to finding out more about project costs so that we can determine if the city can commit to participation. In the meantime, we hope you find this information regarding how the city would utilize the municipal component of application helpful. There's just language in here that's, if you guys want to go ahead and sign, or the before it, that's my, which you can take right now. Please.
It's definitely slang, but it's not completely fine. And that's why I kind of stayed at it.
So there is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor? Councilman Harjo?
We get his mind, we change that last instance of would in the very last sentence to quit. Just recognizing that this is wordsmithing.
Just do what you write it.
Councilman Harjo, I always say, Jenny helped me with my, my letter, and she, she made me take out the six percent, the possibly could, right? Sorry. Go ahead, Council. Council. So, Councilman Brennan?
Can I offer a suggestion? Like, if you want, just throw in there, while the city has not committed to anything as yet, you can just give one of those, you know, legalese disclaimer sort of thing, if you want to throw that in, that might appease. Nope, won't.
Sir?
All right. So, I know there's a motion and a second. I don't know where we're at. So, where are we at, Councilman Brennan?
I restate it?
Yes.
Let's start over. Make a motion.
Jeff's changes and his changes.
To occur. Jeff's changes, take out the use of existing residential subdivisions, and in the last paragraph, change what you could, and pressurized irrigation, right? That's under the pressurized irrigation system for residential, existing residential subdivisions.
How are you ever going to do pressurized irrigation, is my question, as a staff member? Even on future development? And I don't mean to, like, corroborate or make the best of a vast velocity of cost, and probably very much unrealistic in the way Mountain Home is designed currently.
Mayor? Councilman Harjo?
Totally respect that.
I think, I think it's wise, don't get me wrong, like, for the record, it's wise to do, but...
I totally respect that. If we're using the same lens that we used for fiber in new, in new builds, there could be a potential to do that, and that cost does come on the developer side of the facts and not the cities, but it does get conveyed to the city, so there's no N cost, and that would require a program to, to start up, right? So, those are those, like, going on future potentials? It, it could be accomplished, is it going to? Hard to tell at this juncture, right? But we have done similar programs, and I think where the lesson learned in more recent history is, is local improvement districts and those kind of things. Now we know what kind of, what kind of hill that is to climb at, at certain junctures. So, to Councilman Brennan's motion, taking the context of existing subdivisions and existing residential out of that, I think, gives us the leeway and the opening to say we're supportive of this program. However, it is uncertain at this time, and we are not getting any funds at this time. This is just how we could, conceptually, give these things. That, that's, that's my goal, is to get to that.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Can I just motion?
Second.
It's been motioned, and second, any further discussion? Hearing not, I'll call up the question. Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Run down to new business items removed, consent to Jenna, they were none. We're gonna run down to this, oh, sorry, Colonel Hanson. Non-action on discussion with Marty, with the military liaison Marty Anderson regarding discussion with American Classical Charter, and public records request. This is Councilwoman Garvey.
Hi, Marty, thanks for coming.
Mayor?
So, when we received your military liaison report for January of this year, you did mention that you spoke with the founders group for American Classical School Chair, Mr. Ron Stonebreaker, which I do appreciate your monthly reports. However, then, when constituent went out and did a FOIA request, there's a lot more to that. So you've been pretty busy. I, at the last meeting, at final comments, I listed all the entities that you were in correspondence with, and I'm just asking you today to give us an update on what your intent is and what you've been doing.
Sure. So, Mayor, Council, so basically, I've had members from the American Classical Academy reach out to me and ask about the potential, their interest in coming to Mountain Home. So, all I did was set them up with some developers to have conversations, because they needed land. Where those conversations, I'm not necessarily sure of, that's where the committee would have to be the person to ask for that.
Also, there was, I guess, a general understanding between the city, the school district, and the base, that if, if the school superintendent of Mountain Home went out for that PSMI grant, that there would, you would slow down or be, like, no talks of charter schools because of the, how it could impact the local school district. I guess that conversation took place fall, September, something last year, but according to these records, they're as early as January of this year. So, can you explain that, of what that unwritten agreement was about?
No, actually, I can't. So, basically, what happened was, American Classical Academy, also with Jim Prep, they made proposals to Mountain Home Air Force Base that they would build a charter school on the installation. But then, with talks, Superintendent Gilbert said that he would actually come up with the funds either through the community project fund or through their own funds, that they would pay the 20%. So after that kind of discussion, then it was relayed to those two charter schools that, hey, the Mountain Home School District is gonna pursue the Stevenson, and agreed to do that, and then that was the end of it. There was no, I don't know, understand or where you got the information from as far as an agreement, that there'd be no discussions. That statement was never made. Mayor Sykes and I had a couple of meetings with Superintendent Gilbert, and as far as no per, no discussion or whatever of any charter schools, that was never agreed to, or stated, or anything like, as such.
Is it still your intent to go and pursue charter school for Mountain Home?
So, basically, it's up to the community to decide. So, again, I'll ask you, what is the approval process for a charter school?
For us, you have to find land, and that's where we're at. So I, you've been talking to developers, I don't know, like, where you plan on putting this school. I guess what I'm saying is inform all of council at one time what you are envisioning.
So it's not my vision. Charter School was interested in coming to Mountain Home because of the fact that they saw an opportunity to help improve education. So they're interested in coming here. So then the process would be that they would actually find the land, they would actually do the platting, go through, get the permits, and then that goes through P and Z, and then approval to the council. That's the approval process. So it's up to them, and that's where the committee comes in, and starts to try to have conversations with the citizens. If the citizens are interested in this, then that's what, then they start to push that grassroots effort, and it comes to you all.
So, agreed. Yeah, when you say citizens, when a FOIA request gets out like this, that you've been doing this research, guess who hears from the citizens? It's all of us. And then we have to answer on behalf of what you've been doing. So that's all I'm asking tonight, is what have you been doing, so then we can answer that to the citizens.
Again, basically, just making connections as a liaison. They reached out, so I just made connections with developers, and then they're having their conversations, so obviously, it's in early stages, but that's up to them to decide their way forward.
Mayor? Councilman Brennan? Marty, just one question. Did I hear, did Stevens, sorry, how do I word this? Did the school superintendent or the school district, do they have to come up with 20% for the Stevenson bill?
Mm-hmm.
And then is he also committing to another 20% for, like, the American Classic Charter School?
No. So that's the thing with American Classical Schools, kind of a benefit for the community, is that that is private funds. So there's no bonding, there's no levy that comes here.
Your reference of 20% was solely for Stevenson?
Solely for Stevenson. That is, of course, with the PSMI grant. So it's, this is the office of local defense communities, it's a congressional program. We were one of 150, but we were 38th on the list, and we were selected in order to do that. So new school would obviously be an investment in our community and also in our base.
And then they had two options. Correct me if I'm wrong, Marty. One option was the money they got from State House, the 13.89 to do the 20% for, they put in the, Senator Simpson?
Community project fund.
Community project fund. So, that's at the National Defense Authorization Act form area.
Appropriation. So the problem is, if, if appropriations would pass a normal cycle, then Mountain Home School District would have got $6.4 million in order to go through the design, go through, get that done. The goal is to have it done by the fall of 2027, before the school started. But, and then that saves our taxpayers, so we get a new school, K-36, which is good. We get a new school, so, without charging the taxpayers, that was the whole goal.
Mayor? Council, Councilman Harjo?
Mayor, and I guess one of my questions here is, in the monthly report, the outline charter program, it's going through a marketing and analysis stage, and it expand, it talks about expanding seventh through 12th grades in one-year increments, K through 12 charter program. Are we aware of how many, how many students will be enrolled? Like, is there any data about what their initial projections are for students enrolled in a potential charter schools?
Not that I'm aware of. I've heard school district use numbers of approximately 400, but I don't know many studies or anything.
Are we aware as well that the local school district is funded by enrollment and head count and attendance? That is, to, to put it mildly, this, this initiation or continuation of discussions about, about commercial charter schools in the community, it will always draw back to a lowest common denominator is that there will be a reduction in head count in the school district as a result of this. And, for one, I'm curious why the city of Mountain Home is having these talks about the school district, about legislation regarding school choice programs, tax credits, and so on, when this is not our swim lane, like squarely not our, our swim lane, and we don't really have that greater partnership with the school district in this sense. Our, our own city, when the last time a school bond was run, did not vocally support throughout the community the aspect of the bond. So, when I see these things happen, it is, it is very concerning, the fact that we're going down a road that seems to be very clear, in the sense that we are actively pursuing interests regarding charter schools that will pull head count out of our local schools, which in turn ends up with less funding, less teachers, possibly harder uphill battles in getting bonds passed and funding. The, the topic of, of quality of education is one that is, is interesting to me. You've mentioned that it's quality education. Stevenson Elementary has some of the state's highest K through four test scores, like end performance. So it's, it's very odd to me that while we may have ailing infrastructure, what seems to be the primary problem in the community, and passing bonds has been historically difficult. The quality of education is separate from the facility itself. So, again, I'm curious why, in the interest of the, and under the banner of the city of Mountain Home, that we're pursuing any of this?
I, I think all Marty did, because he had a relationship prior, because he had talked to Mr. Stonebreaker, Stonebreaker probably, I'm not trying to speak for you, Marty, probably goes, hey, Marty, do you know any developers out there? Marty's like, these are the two, be like, no different than a WinCo. Marty had a relationship with somebody at WinCo, go, hey, do you know of any developers? I think that's all he was trying to do, like that. Here's the people, no, you go do you, I'm out, because we already got Stevenson, is right?
Mayor? Councilwoman Garvey?
And then, I'm gonna say, it wouldn't just be that, I mean, can you clarify what you've been lobbying at the Capitol?
Sure. The only thing that I've been lobbying is House Bill 40, which is the military retired pick. That's the only thing that I've been lobbying.
Lobby for House Bill 257, that bill? Were they intended?
I have not.
Mayor?
Councilman Harjo?
The city has an entry on the Sunshine Report through the Secretary of State showing that we have a lobbyist that has lobbied for House Bill 39, which is, again, a school-related topic. The packet information to, to today's topic has specific reference to an RS that coincides with House Bill 257. This is, it is not isolated and bucketed to the instance of American Classic Charter School. This is, this is a systematic look of non-traditional public school outlets. It, it's documented. The public records request shows it, as well as, as well as the Secretary of State's Sunshine Report. Again, my question is, why is the city of Mountain Home injecting ourselves into this topic?
So, Mayor?
I can answer.
So, again, let's go back from the start of this. So, first off, we talked about quality of education that you mentioned, and you stated that it was budget-related. But if you look at it from a military perspective, so my job is to look out for the welfare of, of the benefit of the installation that takes, has a positive impact to the city of Mountain Home. So it's a win-win type situation with our relationship with the base. So, back in 2021, Secretary of the Air Force Wilson made a statement, or came out and said that as part of any mission, new mission growth, that quality of education at that point was, jobs, license respite would be evaluated as part of the economic, or the environmental impact study. So they put that as part of that agreement. So from that, what I'm looking at is future platforms capability of, of education being the number one quality of life issue, right? So, if we can approve our overall quality... So if we can improve our overall quality of education and give families a choice, give military families a choice where they want to be here, then that sustains the base and then any other future. So last year, we went through the issue of divesting of an entire squadron, where we lost anywhere from 500 to 750 personnel. Huge significant economic impact. So if we can improve our overall quality of education, that's a great benefit, a win-win, not only for our installation, but also for our community. So win-win. If the school district says, "Hey, we're gonna lose these people," or these numbers of students, which has an impact into the budget, but then that tells everybody that families then do want choice. They do want to have options. So again, I don't see where it's our place or my place to limit those options. So if somebody reaches out, and it's the actual American Classical School that reached out and said, "Hey, just want to see what options, who can we look at?" Because they were looking at for land. But then that has its own process. I'm not in that approval process. You all, you all decide. But I'm looking at it from a base perspective of if we have better schools, because we don't, we cannot get bonds. So if you have a charter school that uses private money to build schools, which then gives education a choice to families, that's a good thing. And then it also saves the taxpayer money, because they're not being bonded or they're not being levied to sustain those. So it's a family choice. So again, it's not my job to say, tell a charter school, "Hey, no, don't come here to Mountain Home." That's not my choice to make for the citizens. That's their choice. So that part, not my decision. Now, when you talk about, what was the House Bill, 39? I don't remember, because I did sign, or do the thing, but I'm pretty sure I clicked on that I didn't support any of that aspect. But 39 is where they gave priority to military families, which was a state thing that was being pushed by another organization. But 39 would have been a great thing for the state of Idaho, if we were looking at trying to grow mission, which I could talk about here in a minute. But if you're trying to grow mission, that would have been a great thing to show the Department of Defense and Department of the Air Force that, hey, Idaho supports this military, supports the quality of life initiatives for families, because those things affect, impact overall retention and recruitment efforts. So that's why that's evaluated. And the thing is, now, that bill that got killed or pulled back into committee also affected our Navy base up at Bayview, and affected our folks at Gallen Field and also our folks in Twin Falls. So it wasn't just here in Mountain Home. So it affected everything. But I'm looking at it from a strategic perspective, because at some point in time, those F-15s are gonna go away. And if we don't have the right things in place, housing, schools, infrastructure, guess what? Then that base ends up going away. So I've been asked to look at how we try to support and ensure the long-term viability of Mountain Home Air Force Base. Schools is one of those things. So I think it's great that you had a charter school that was interested in City of Mountain Home in order to provide families and military families the opportunity to improve their education for their children. Bottom line.
Mayor.
Council, one more question.
I 100% agree with school choice. I homeschool my oldest. My youngest is in a charter school here currently, and I teach at Clint's Ferry School District. So you don't get more diverse than that. However, to what he's saying per head, I can understand, because guess what? We don't even have funding for summer school at Clint's Ferry School District. We need it. So if you start pulling, you start pulling kids from a small district like that, or even Mountain Home, into another entity, which, guess what? My oldest, I tried to get him in. They just did the Lotto for Richard McKenna, and he's now, this is his third year on the waiting list. I understand that. Like, I see it from your perspective 100%. I also see it from the children that are in the school system. And that's where I know, if you start pulling, if kids start going to another entity, like a charter school, then the funds will extremely be depleted and suffer for the public school system. I see that on a firsthand basis. We used to have Friday School, can't afford to have that either. Now, if we were the size of Meridian and Napa, you know, bigger communities where there's bigger populated people, then let's be popping these up left and right. But we're just, in my opinion, too small of a community to bring in up multiple charter schools, especially when we already have a pretty decent one here. But I take from all perspectives. I just wanted to get that out.
Mayor.
All right.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo.
I have a couple of quick points of clarification. House Bill 39 was an Idaho prior choice tax credit bill that is nearly verbatim to House Bill 40. House Bill 93, House Bill 40 was a tax relief for military pensions. And House Bill 257 was in regard to the prioritization of military children. There's distinct language for those. And again, as the city of Mountain Home, we're involved in multiple, multiple school-related efforts at the state and local level that are counter to our local school district. And I will say here, I don't believe that those actions are conducive to a unified community. Our children are the ones that have to deal with the lack of headcount and the lack of funding, and teachers are not incentivized to stay in the local public school system with lack of funding. So that's my express concern. These actions are happening under the banner of the city of Mountain Home. And I don't, I don't agree with them.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan.
Marty, if I may paraphrase here, if I heard you right, you said that, like, you believe it's a good thing for parents to have the choice to basically let their kids go to school.
Options for educational programs.
Yeah. And as far as choice of where they go, I understand that. If this, like, charter school, American Classic were to come, is there a choice in terms of a vote by the public for it? Or is that eliminated, and it just happens if somebody pays for it privately?
No. So it goes through the whole process. But again, what I understand of the process, again, I'm not part of that or those conversations. But they were established as a 501(c) nonprofit organization. They go through, do grassroots efforts to see if there's enough initiative or support. So that's where you would learn from the community if that's what they would want, because they would do the numbers. And then, so the numbers would come forward. If there's enough support, then the American Classical Academy would go through and start looking at land development or where it'd be, and then go through the permitting process, the planning process, and go through P and Z, and then through approval to you as council.
Mayor, follow-up. Paul, for you?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, like, statutory requirement for a vote of the citizens to bring a school?
No.
The entitlement process of P and Z and city council is, I guess, one thing, but in terms of a true vote, that's not applicable to this.
No, it isn't.
Marty.
Thank you.
Colonel Hanson. Nice, please. We're gonna run down to new business number, oh, sorry, numbers. I guess reversed number three discussion with Colonel Hanson from the Mountain Home Air Force Base.
Colonel, how we doing? Fantastic, sir. Mayor Sykes, Council members, I just wanted to take the opportunity, because there's been a lot of discussion on charter schools, and then the work base and military gets thrown into that discussion realm. So we just want to make sure we level set and avoid any confusion as to what the official position. So I'm actually here on behalf of Colonel Faro. He knows exactly what I'm about to tell you. So, you know, he's blessed that. I'll let you know if I don't, if there's something him and I didn't really address. But at the end of the day, our position on a new charter school is neutral. We are not for it, in the sense that we're actively seeking out anything. I think what I heard earlier was a pretty accurate description of what was going on before I got here, but over the last past year before, we had a way end with the Stevenson School. But definitely since, to my knowledge, we haven't, and nobody in official capacity has talked to a charter school. Now that said, that we haven't really been seeking to open a charter school, we're not against it either. You know, our involvement in those sort of things, if somebody asked us, "Would your airmen use it?" Yeah, probably some would. Do some airmen, like, choose not to live in Mountain Home because of the school choices? Probably, yes. Now, but we're here to support, like we did with the PSMI, any sort of efforts that might help improve the quality of life for our airmen, and then anything that might remove the barriers, because obviously, as you all know, the sense of normalcy for our families is sometimes very difficult to achieve. And so I would say that the options that are afforded to local Mountain Home residents, we'd like those same afforded, but sometimes the military life doesn't jive with some of the, I would say, mission requirements to some of these schools, whether it's charter, private, or something along those lines. Things like, hey, I need an address to actually apply. So those are the type of things. Not to throw support at any bill that might be out there, just anything that might really give that sort of effort to remove barriers of entry for quality of life for our airmen. That's where we really have, I guess, a desire to see those things and give our folks a more normal quality of life. That all said, you know, my 24 years, and the mayor's heard me say this a couple times, I've actually never seen a community so integrated with military community that is adjacent to it. You know, the vast majority of us, you know, we're from different places. We're not from Mountain Home, but this is our home, and we try to make it as normal as possible for our airmen, even though they don't have a normal job. And it's about to get really abnormal here in a couple of weeks. And so that's really our position. I just wanted to make sure we clarified that in any official proceedings, that if somebody wants, and then if you need clarification in the future, please call my office, call Colonel Faro's, well, actually, Colonel Faro and I will be going on a trip here shortly, but Colonel James and also my deputy Lieutenant Colonel Rutherford will be happy to help clarify. And then obviously, you all know Dominique, our liaison to the schools, that this particular topic is our lead conduit for information. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you all may have. I really appreciate you guys letting me come up and clarify things.
Council, you got anything for Colonel Hanson?
Thank you for what you do.
He's the one doing, sorry. Colonel, could you describe your, the meeting that you had with School Superintendent Gilbert?
Yeah, we went and had a conversation on a couple of different topics. Actually, I've met with him a couple of times. Which one are you referring to? Most recent? Most recent. Okay. It had to do with, there was some confusion that out there that the recent bill wasn't supported by the military, what I understood. And I was trying to ask, I was talking to Superintendent Gilbert as to whether or not where that confusion might have been. In fact, to our position of neutrality, one, we didn't support the bill, two, we did not support the bill. Just a neutral position. And so that's where I was trying to understand, you know, where that came from, what that was, and then hopefully get that clarity about our message of where we're actually staying.
Were there voices raised in this meeting, or like negative comments made towards a member of our school board?
I wouldn't say there was negative comments, sir. There was definitely frustration of the situations of miscommunication, for sure. And at the end of the meeting, we both, we both made sure, I know he did it for me, and I did it for him, to make sure, hey, sir, you know, it's just frustration from miscommunication. You know, at no point did I think a relationship with Mr. Gilbert is a bad one at all, actually. In fact, it's very productive, you know, even on day-to-day execution of things. Because that school, Stevenson School, is on our base, when something happens to the base, communication with Mr. Gilbert, and vice versa, when Mr. Gilbert needs something from us. So it's been very, very productive, and we definitely appreciate his partnership.
All right. Colonel, like I said, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one. All right. Let's run down to action item number four, deliberation decision regarding tournament fees, tournament user fees for season pass holders, and tournament payouts. Council, one more question.
My question was, did I get them all?
You did.
Okay. I have lots of notes here. My first, my first question is, something came up with this new, this, how is this gonna be? Nobody can seem to, I'm not trying to call you guys out, please, if I ever stand out. I am just trying to hit the bottom of how this even came about.
I guess what's considered a payout is that what the tournament chairs collect and how that's paid? Like, what is payout?
I don't know. You guys came up with the season pass holders have to pay for tournaments. I don't know.
So is that, is that, I guess that's what I'm asking. Is that the question that was side of that? I would have to say that question isn't defined in the fees resolution, which you and I briefly chatted about. As staff, the season pass really has no guidance on what, other than you've paid all your fees. So does that include quintessentially a tournament would be more of kind of a private event, right? Held on our course. And I see both sides of it, in fairness in the argument. But as a staff member, we need that thing spelled out of who is collecting fees and who's not collecting fees on a season pass. If a season pass gives you a tournament play, then let's change the resolution and define it that way. So we, as staff members, know what our direction is.
So I think it's important to understand really quick. So if I'm a season pass holder and I decide that I want to play in the St. Luke's Tournament, I pay the entire amount. I pay it. Even on a season pass holder, I pay what it costs to play. I don't get a subtraction of the green fees. So I'm doing that because, and I already have a season pass, but I'm doing that because I know that that portion of my money is going to go to that fundraiser that's being put on. Now, where this is really going to be in effect, so, which is, do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, because that's like, that's an anomaly now, right?
Okay. So, however, if we change it to where, as it's written, then the city will get the season pass fees, and the tournament host will have to pay that to the city versus disseminating it to our community. And so I think it's really important. The other thing is, is I counted, somebody said 14 in-house tournaments. There's actually 25. So the important point is that those in-house tournaments are designed to put on to bring people to the course on slow days. If we don't have somebody... I'm sorry, I keep looking at you.
It's like, I'm not, I'm used to it. I'm good.
If we don't have somebody that is going to host those tournaments, which at this point, I can tell you, we probably don't, our new restaurateur is going to suffer immensely, and our course is going to suffer. Because those in-house tournaments, in fact, I don't have to pay my greens fees. I can go in, I pay my $30 to the tournament host, in this case, say, like, the Farm Bureau chaplain's. Those are a huge hit in our community. And people play those all summer. They go to them every Sunday. Excuse me, once a Sunday. But anyway, my point is that that money goes towards payouts. And season pass holders don't have to pay to play, because they've already paid, right? It's no different than if I'm gonna decide on a Sunday, I'm just gonna go out and play using my season pass. It's no different than they're going out playing in a tournament and paying an extra little amount of money because they're gonna possibly win that tournament. It's double, we're charging double to our golfers, which already we have increased our fees to where it's becoming quite unaffordable. The other thing is, actually, I have a couple of things. I apologize. I'm mentoring, making my notes here. So, interplay, for example, okay? We have three different leagues. Well, are we gonna require them? They, most of them get season passes or weekday passes so that they can play in league. Are we gonna require them to pay an additional? And if we're not gonna require them to pay an additional, then why are we requiring everybody else to pay an additional fee to play? So the other thing, and I will try not to specifically talk about a certain person, but I would like to discuss some of the job descriptions that was put out when we hired, when we went out to hire, and I'm not saying this towards any current staff, but it specifically states in the job description that they are going to promote tournaments within the men's and ladies associations, scheduling outside tournament events, and managing the daily play of golf. They're going to develop, plan, organize, conduct, and manage golf tournaments, clinics, and junior golf programs. They are going to, I don't know what else I tried to, I apologize. I'll go back to it. But anyway, my point is, is this is not- But anyway, my point is, is this is not happening out there. And, and I think there's a large disconnect. I have spoke with several people, there's a large disconnect out there. We're not taking cash anymore. Why is that? There's just so many things, and I think, I really want to bang my head against this desk because we talked about the golf course for two years and here we are again. I just think we need to remember that these people that put on these golf tournaments spend hours and hours and hours of their time for the betterment of our community. And, and this is, it's, it's just not a good way in my opinion. Sorry, that was a little bit of a rant. Frustrating.
So Counsel McGarvey, what is, what do you want us to put in? What do you want us to change? What do you want us to, like, I guess, staff needs direction so we can change. If it's a resolution change, we can get that back to the council for a resolution change, obviously, probably sooner rather than later. What, what do you want?
Sure. I guess that's my, that's my ask when my memo was.
Absolutely. It's just not up to me, it's going to be up to all four of us, but my suggestions or my ask would be this. A, and I tried to go back and find our minutes, our meeting minutes from November 31, 2024R. I would like that resolution to be changed to reflect weekday passes to be Monday through Friday. And that's always how it's been. It's been that way for as long as I know, and how I missed that, regardless, I missed it, I may, I may have voted yes on it, but I would like to see it changed back. Also, that when, when a person, when a person plays in a tournament, if they are a season pass holder, depending on the type of tournament, whether it's in-house, which is what you guys called them, which I would say were the ones that TJ hosted, or if it's set up by, you know, some of our outside entities, you know, the Truewood tournaments, things like that, that money, that money continues to go towards the community and to them, not back to the city. So if, if at the end of the day, it's reconciled and there's, say there's 10 season pass holders that played in that tournament, that 10 season pass holder's money goes, not charged back to the city.
Goes to the tournament.
It goes to the tournament, yes. That's what I would like to see specifically. Do I think there's a lot more work to be done out there? Yes, and I think we need to find league, league play as well.
Not to, sorry.
No, no, you're right.
Counsel, I just want to clarify. So season passes and league play, if you have a season pass, or tournaments, excuse me, if you have a season pass, you don't pay big greens fees for league play or season, or for tournaments? And, because I don't want to get into the defined of in-house or not in-house tournament, that fund just has to be to whatever the organization is that's hosting it.
Yes, we don't know, we don't need to do that. You are, you are right, yes. The other part of that is, sorry, I'll come back to it. Anyway, actually, there's still a point, so.
Counsel Hajar?
Counsel McGarvey, I was tracking the job notes. You mentioned the weekday only season pass, was that the, the one that you'd like to go back to Monday through Friday, or was that the, the, just regular greens fees?
Weekday.
So the weekday pass, according to the, to the resolution here, the weekday only is Monday through Friday excluding holidays?
So there's several places where it's not correct.
There's some conflicting information.
We need to update it, yeah. It's Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the next page. Yeah, under the season passes.
I don't know how many cheaters.
I don't.
Here's something.
Season passes, oh, Monday through Friday excluding holidays.
Yeah, so there's several places that it is not.
Like kind of not congruent to the.
And I would like to see it Monday through Friday.
Okay. Look at that.
And then, well, that's, that's what I was, there?
Go ahead, keep going.
Sorry. That's what I was trying to say. So a weekday pass would include league play, because league play is Tuesday and Wednesdays, Thursday mornings. They, they have a Twilight League on Friday, but I, I think that's a their own separate thing and they play, or they play Twilight, but, but the weekday passes would include league play. And as stands right now, it doesn't, or it's definitely not clear.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just, that's, that's, those are my wishes.
Counsel McGarvey?
Yeah. Sometimes it's a foreign language when you don't play golf, but I do want to make sure that these questions are addressed. So these are on behalf of some citizens. So do you guys mind if I read them and then if you can answer them? And I also, with everything you stated, support. All right, here we go. Is the golf course manager responsible for ensuring our dates and times are secured for the duration of league play?
Question.
I'll, I'll be quite honest, I, I didn't even consider league play when we laid out all of the tournament form requests. I can tell you that the clerk's office has been filtering tournament schedules since we began this process, so I will definitely get on it tomorrow.
No, no, you're great, please, don't ever.
But I mean, like, to answer the question, we did not consider that. And I don't know if Jeff did either, speaking for him, but we will address it tomorrow.
Okay, you can get an answer to that. And then how will you guys get these answers out to the public, instead of trying to go through us to get out to the public?
I will not. I will email you and you can email us, citizen.
We can do something out of the golf course.
Can you do something like that?
We can, yeah, we'll, we'll put out a, change is coming, we have a TV up, well, it's not up yet, damn it. We, we'll, we'll put out some stuff.
All right, thank you. It says, or will we, okay. Yeah, because the other questions are, will we have to secure the dates and times on season pass? Okay. Will the league fees still be the league chairman person's responsibility and be acceptable to the city? Did I get that?
Say that again, sorry.
Will the league fees still be the league chairman's responsibility and be accepted, acceptable to the city?
So we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I haven't played league for a while. So you pay your money to the league chairman, and then they do all their own payouts, right? No?
No, so we, we would, we'd pay TJ, we'd pay our license fee.
So could the chairman still work for TJ for the clubhouse stuff? Is that what, that's how you get paid out, just through the club?
Yeah, well, TJ doesn't, anyway, okay, I digress.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So we're trying to answer, I don't have an answer.
No, I have an answer. So, so in my opinion, those types of things could be easily worked out if some of us, a couple of people, you know, maybe Helen, I would be happy to go sit down with them and bring it back to you guys and say, what can we do, guys? This is not hard stuff, right? It's been happening for 12 years and all of a sudden it's like, poof, we can't do this anymore. So I would be happy, and, and Counsel McGarvey, can you, can you just read question number one one more time, please?
Yeah. Is the golf course manager responsible for ensuring our dates and times are secured for the duration of league play, or will we have to secure the dates and times on the city's website?
Counsel McGarvey?
So according to his job, excuse me, the person's job posting, it says that, yes, they will schedule outside tournament events and manage the daily play of golf. So again, not to specifically target one person, so clearly trying to be careful here. However, there is a huge disconnect down there of the duties of the job that was hired for and what's being done down there.
So I think what we need to do then is, I, I always thought we were, we had the, we were doing the open gov for a little bit, and then that kind of got a debacle because there was, then didn't we go to the true club solution? No?
No, we don't, right now.
How were we supposed to reserve those dates and times? I thought we were able to do that on the new software.
No, currently, right now, to request a tournament, they thought a Google Docs form that auto generates an approval process. It's the clerk's office, the golf superintendent, and the golf manager, and then the golf managers inputting it in and blocking out the T-T dates for the day of the tournament, corresponding back to the coordinator. And then it comes back to the clerk's office that it has all been approved, and then the clerk's amber, the assistant chief's been keeping a calendar of all these events that we know to ensure that they are being tracked and documented, and therefore we know what's going on.
And we're doing that for data?
Well, one, we're doing it to ensure that the tournaments are being booked and accounted for so that there's no mess up, because the city Mountain Home has not been responsible for overseeing and scheduling the tournaments in the past. And so therefore, I was trying to somewhat be organized out of the office to make sure we have accountability for it on the course.
Mayor? Counsel Hajar?
Counsel McGarvey, thoughts on having some of those discussions and then coming back, maybe bringing our golf staff in and having a one session about this to even like drill down to the, here are the bullet points, these are the questions we need to answer, and then follow that up with action items on the following agenda to that, to that one session so we can, we can make a decision and get this going before the, before the all season is.
Counsel McGarvey?
Yes, and if we could do this sooner rather than later, excuse me, because, I mean, our first major golf, according to this, is the Isle Power Golf Hour, and the last thing we want to do is look like a bunch of knuckleheads out there.
Mayor?
Counsel McGarvey?
Yeah, no, I agree with that as well. I would still like to ask these questions, because if you can answer them, then they will get answered, and if they cannot, then we can put it in that court meeting. Okay. Well, other golf.
Just before you last, the third question. I would like, if I could ask tonight, to define as much, because the responsibility of the mayor and myself is to ensure that the employees of the city are held to the standards they are. So rather than prolonging these discussions and pushing them out two more weeks and leaving them our groups in unknown circumstances, I would like as much addressed to me, and I will gladly take it to the staff tomorrow and ensure that it's done, rather than prolonging it to another date. And then if more come up, please tell me or the mayor and we will fix it.
Mayor, can I add to your list?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Her number three is taking forever.
I'm sorry. Can you add to the list while we're not taking cash?
Yeah, I think some of the cash dilemma was blocking it while we've been under construction.
Absolutely.
So that's why there's been no cash in the midst of construction is because we don't have a place to lock it and making sure it stays secure. So that is why right now, we hope that not to be permanent.
We just, okay.
Sorry, okay, Jenny, nobody, nobody got questions, it's all Jenny right now.
Whatever.
All right, will other golfers be allowed to play during our designated times? And who decides that?
Will other, okay.
Yeah, sure. Will other golfers be allowed to play during our designated times? And who decides that?
So that must be designated, meaning league play, yes, that's, thanks. Do you have the answer?
So in the past, and I hate to relate with the past because I have a big one on that that you cannot change the past, however, in the past, if there was tournament play, say women's league on a Tuesday night, the staff at Desert Canyon, whether it had, would have been TJ or whoever that was manning, they, they had been doing it long enough to know, okay, you know what, you can jump on hole number six, stay out of ladies' way. Now if this becomes a problem, then they're going to limit it. So, you know, it's just a, it's, it's a delicate balance. It's, it's just knowing your, your, knowing your customer, knowing your, your, where the ladies are at, or the men for that matter. Now, I will say the men's league, and I can't really speak to it, but it's a big league, it's big, and the golf course is full. So, no, you may not be able to get on that night, it might be full, but, again, how long back? Because they only play, they, they first, they only do nine.
Yeah.
So there's other nine holes that are open still.
Yeah, so they could, quintessentially, Becky's right, you could do the, the women, you know, all the women are starting on the back nine, and that's all they're, they're just do that rotation, then somebody can jump on the back.
Yeah, right. One more question?
So I guess to answer the question is, yes, we would try to care to the customers.
Okay, thanks. Will there be enough staff at the course on tournament day, or does each tournament chair have to ensure they have extra personnel to complete these activities?
So we are hiring, what do you call, perp and I, staff to make sure that, obviously, if we know something's big going to happen, we're going to have extra staff there. And that's where I think this gets into the weeds of, do, do we do the scorecards, do just the tournament director do the scorecards? You know, do we do the, that's where this, this body is going to have to decide what, how, how much do you want our staff to do? So that would be a good, that would be a good one to bring up.
This question is, why were the fees changed for tournament play without golfers being notified? This information was not on an item on the list of fees provided by the city?
I think that goes back to the reservation, has a true definition.
Right, that, okay. Our seas, and then I think you heard this one, it was about the season passes, where we're going to get them Monday through Friday, and then there'll be a true just Saturday, Sunday weekend one. Okay, hang on one second. There is a question that was asked tonight about reserve process for carts. I guess it seems more common today now, or?
So do you mean, does the tournament, do they get to have the, those carts? Because they, well, I'm obviously.
I can speak to it a little bit because I did talk to Teresa Wilson, who does the Elks tournament. They did not include cart pricing in their tournament pricing because they felt like it had gotten so high that they could not afford to add it in there. So people needing carts will have to contact golf course management and reserve their own carts. I believe the chamber is discussing doing the same thing so that when you sign up, maybe you're paying $75 or $80 instead of $100 because they're afraid they're going to lose people. And what happens, and you, you need to realize, people play in the same tournaments over and over. Paula and I probably play at six fundraisers during the year and donate, and buy, and sponsor a hole, and sponsor a team, and, and that's going to start adding up.
So usually, it's always been, hey, Terry's right, like, hey, the, the play in the tournament is 200 bucks, excluding cart. And then that's, you know, obviously the, the tournament director would pay, if you didn't have the season pass, they would pay the, the greens fees. If you had a season pass that went to the tournament, cart was always separate. Not always, but sometimes they added that into the tournament.
Correct.
So like if you took, so if there is a tournament, I would assume that day is solely squared for the tournament itself. So obviously, we have 50 carts plus, I would say maybe 10 running carts, so maybe 60. That's all that we'll have. I think that the question is, is what if there's, what is it, number guests is a large one, right? We need another 30 more carts. Does that, is that what the council wants us to do, is to, to figure out a way to get those from, I think they got them from stands? Is that what the councils want? That would be another question that we need to, to talk about as well, so. Counsel McGarvey?
I definitely think that if we're going to steer away from renting carts on these burger tournaments, that that needs to be put out there like now.
Oh, yeah.
So that people can start to accommodate for not having a cart, for us renting out carts. I mean, that's, that's a big one. Especially like kind of gas lines, those are very dangerous.
So as I stated at the beginning of this meeting, I was going to ask questions on behalf of the citizens. Can Terry manage to ask another question?
Why do you come up here? Can I, can I just make a statement? I know we got away from having advisory boards, but it seems like this year it's more critical than any other to have dialogue with golfers. How about the league presidents get together with you and let's come to a consensus, who's going to do what? I've been out to the golf course multiple times asking these questions as a tournament spokesperson, and I don't get a whole lot of answers. It's very frustrating. And I, we have new people in new positions that maybe don't understand what the expectation is. I even suggested, I must be proactive, invite tournament directors out here and have dialogue with each other as to who's going to do what. Because the last thing you want to happen is to be embarrassed at the first tournament, which I think the first one is the Daniel Dopp's, that's May 10th. There's actually a, a new tournament that's scheduled this year. So everybody's going to want to have the COGS working and know what the expectation is. Scoring after a tournament has always been done at the course, but if that's something we have to have somebody do, then we'll teach somebody how to do it, who we'd like to know ahead of time. So again, I think if you get the league presidents, there's the round bellies, there's the ladies' day league, and night league for Tuesdays, there's this Thursday league and the Wednesday Smith.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll reach out and grab that, we all have the screen, we'll do that later.
And then, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, again, how will you get that information out?
I know a girl that probably knows them all.
Other than that, then.
We're going to, we got to get.
Will you make a video or something? I don't know, is that something you can do? Like just?
I will have Nikki do the video. I'm not very good at that stuff.
But you see what I'm saying? I just want to make sure because otherwise they'll keep coming in, and I don't like, again, foreign language. The last one I have, so, did this get answered? Will in-house tournaments go away?
What's an in-house tournament?
Well, the lists we have were like 4th of July, sorry, I just keep jumping in.
No, you're fine.
It's not, you're in order.
I thought Charles' tournament.
No. But Counsel McGarvey said there's more than 14.
Yeah, I just went off here, number ten. Yeah, I was just trying to look like there was some spring break ones. I wanna say there was like fourth of July, Flag Day.
The Columbus Day.
Columbus Day, Memorial Day, yeah.
First Salute.
Counsel O'Malley.
Okay, put on. So, I think the key difference is, and I will not speak for TJ, those were tournaments because TJ knew how to hustle and he knew when the golf course was slow and he knew what to do to get people out there on fourth of July and Memorial Day and so he, that is the key difference and it is something that I mentioned over and over and over when we were in discussions of hiring a city employee versus a contractor. There's a stark difference. They receive their paycheck no matter what, no matter how many tournaments there are. They're gonna still get paid. TJ does not get paid if he didn't have those tournaments. So, I think it's safe to say that we definitely probably will not have as many because it's a lot of work on TJ's part. So, and that will hurt birdies. It's gonna hurt, I mean, you know, hopefully maybe he'll figure out how to hustle like TJ did.
Oh, these are like the really quick boom boom, just come play really quick, okay.
Yeah, he monetized the course.
Yeah, okay, I see what you mean. They're not like the Trouba or the St. Luke's or these are just like a, Daniel, I gotta go hit, go play in this quick nine-hole tournament.
On the six right hole.
Yeah. I played for six months on shoulder. Okay, so, oh, Counsel Brennan.
Hold them off till the end here, letting everybody get their comments out.
I'm done.
As Jenny said, you guys have heard me say probably nine million times, I'm not a golfer. I don't pretend to be on TV. But I feel like I have some poignant, maybe direct questions trying to find out how golf money really works. And I'm kinda talking to the three ladies out here that are here. Maybe it's just one directional, I don't know, I apologize. But the first question that comes to my mind is, I think all three of you said it or dittoed it, but are tournaments taking money away from our golf course or the city, or the city income that the golf course should be creating?
Absolutely not.
When I, when I hear, when I hear you, it runs through my mind is that you're saying that, like, the tournaments, the golf course closes for everybody else that's not a part of the tournament. Is that, is that a fair statement?
For six hours.
For six hours. And then, there's, I don't know, in-house or whatever, in-house, the opposite of that is. I've heard it said several times, that the tournaments all happen on like slow days.
No, the in-house tournaments do.
The in-house, there's little, the smaller ones.
The charitable ones typically are on a Saturday.
And I clearly recall a conversation that occurred with counsel earlier that, I can't say who said it, but it was either Jake or TJ that said that the amount of tournaments that are happening on Saturdays are disproportionately keeping non-tournament players, regular golfers, or somebody that just wants to come play for the day off of our course because there's so many of them. I don't know if anybody else remembers hearing that, but I do. And the golf cart thing is part of a tournament. Regardless of whether they pay the city upfront or they pay the tournament, is the city getting the money for the, for the golf carts that would register?
Oh, yes, yes.
It's broken out.
Okay. And essentially, if you're collecting it at the end, you're just gonna write us a check.
Pay the city.
Okay. And so what, where's the disconnect between, I got lost in the conversation, I'm sorry, but about the tournament player paying the city upfront or just paying you? Like, we're, I'm not tracking that.
So, so the-
So hang on a second, I don't usually do this, but I want you three ladies to come up front. You are now part of the-
Conversation.
Conversation because we're not totally wishful, you know what I mean? So I'm trying to stick to-
You're the smeez.
Okay, Marcella, sorry.
What's the question again? I'm sorry. Oh, they've got the greens fees.
The golf cart specifically.
The golf carts go directly to you guys.
It's a hundred percent city.
Hundred percent city.
But there seemed to be like a disconnect whether they're paying us or they're paying you and you don't, I forgot where that went.
Two of the tournaments that I'm aware of, the chamber and the Elks, elected not to include golf fees in their tournament charge.
Golf cart.
Yeah, they're only charging the tournament fee, which includes the greens fee and then what the tournament expects to net. Carts will be directed to Jeff and Jeff will collect for the city. They will do that outside of the tournament fee. Is that a wise choice? I don't know, but it's a, it's one that was made by the Elks. And when I talked to Jimmy, it sounds like the chamber's gonna be doing the same thing because they wanted to keep the price down as they were registering teams.
And I can speak for the St. Luke's tournament. We are not doing that because we want it to be the most convenient it can be for our players. So we will collect one fee and it will be split out and it's all kept track of. This is for golfers, this is for carts, this is for food, this is for prizes, it's all broken out. And then we write a check at the end, we write a check to, well now it would be birdies, we write a check to the city and we write a check to TJ for the pro shop prices. I would like to answer your question, Councilman Brennan, on if this, if tournaments are going to take away from the city because it's taken up the golf course. So, I'm just gonna use the St. Luke's as an example, but I could use the chamber, I could use the Elks, I can, you know, and then Marcella as well. These tournaments bring out people, the majority of the people are not golfers. They don't have a pass. They're paying a full thirty-eight dollar green fee to play in the tournament. All of that money goes to the city for green fees. Now, if we had a tournament that was just pass holders, you wouldn't get a dime because they've already paid their money in their passes. But that doesn't happen. So, in the St. Luke's tournament, we had a hundred and fifteen players. The majority of those players came from Boise, Magic Valley, Sun Valley, McCall. They come from all over and they come to that tournament and they pay the full thirty-eight dollars to the city to play.
Green fees.
Green fees, plus the card.
Plus the card.
Plus the card. I don't think on a Saturday you're gonna get a hundred and fifteen golfers from Mountain Home on that course paying thirty-eight dollars. And the golfers you do have out on that course are probably seasoned pass holders that aren't paying you a dime because they've already paid it.
And you own a golf cart.
And so you're-
And you own a golf cart, correct.
Um.
Sorry, I just, my point is, is that the tournaments bring more money to the city on those days than you would ever make if you didn't have a charter.
In addition to the, like the green fee and the golf cart, you're charging a tournament fee, which is all-
Like an additional fifteen, twenty dollars.
Well, again, I'm only speaking for the tournament that I chair. We're charging this year because of the green fees that gone up, we're charging eighty dollars. But as of last year, we charged seventy dollars. Thirty-eight dollars went to the city for the green fees, twenty-one dollars went to the city for the carts, eleven dollars went to Curly's for the food and the bottom line was even on golfers.
Where, if you don't mind me asking, where are you making the money that you're in turn donating to the community?
The auctions, the sponsors. So whole sponsors, we typically sell, whole sponsors sign a hundred dollars, a tee box.
So the, does the city donate anything for a tournament to happen?
Just the golf course. But it's not really a donation because in a full tournament of thirty-six teams, which is a hundred and forty-four players, that's eighty-five hundred dollars to your-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have been always, either Tiffany or Paula has always donated from the city the golf passes, like two rounds of golf. And we put it in a basket for a-
I do not donate anything.
Sorry. I don't know who does it.
Someone else.
Somebody does it.
From the city.
But that's the only thing the city does. And then TJ used to, on behalf of, I don't know if it was from him as a pro shop or him as for the city, would advertise.
The city paid that.
The city paid that, okay.
On the city website.
And I, but still.
And the paper, right?
Yeah, yeah. And he had every-
Over.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sidetrack for just a second and say I totally support your, like, group that you're talking about because I've learned more from the three of you right here than I have from this council. Like, you're talking my language now, for whatever reason. So I appreciate the mayor letting I come up here. You mentioned as part of a future conversation, extra requirements that the city may have to produce for like tournaments or leagues. Like, I forget the examples you gave, extra staff, like scorecards and all that stuff. That is just priced to do in business for-
Right. Like typically for a tournament, you'll know upfront how many people need to reserve carts. Those carts will be pulled forward, there'll be scorecards on the carts, they're clean, they're ready to go. So that all those golfers have to do is turn on the key and head to their hole assignment. There'll have to be hole assignments too, and that's something in the past that the pro shop did. That's not gonna happen this year so people know where to go when they get out to the course. Somebody has to start the tournament, which the tournament directors can probably do that. We usually have a microphone out there and introduce people and so on and so forth. And then at the end, when everybody comes in, there's the collection of the carts and the actual posting of the scores so you knew who won it.
Okay, thank you. And then, what is the golf industry standard for a weekday pass?
I have no idea. I've only golfed here at Desert.
That's the only place I, there are golf.
Well, I've golfed other places, but it's the only place I have.
Yeah, me too.
I'd like to get an answer to that as part of our future discussion as to, I would like our golf course to be in line with if there's an industry standard. Like, just because it's always been doesn't mean it has to continue to be that way.
Can I ask like industry standard, you're like Treasure Valley?
We're not gonna compare.
Size courses.
Apple City.
Yeah, Tiffany's really good at like finding like-sized cities, all that stuff. So it's all on you. I'm just kidding.
I think you guys report last year with municipal courses.
Yeah, I want to see.
You've done like Jerome Machubek and-
If you get, your question was on the weekday, is that like the, the date, like is it Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday? Is that your?
For like municipalities that have a golf course, if they break it down into weekday and weekend season passes, how do they define it? What is normal? How many other golfers are around that don't have it?
I want to say in the little bit of research I did when we've been discussing this over the last several years, that we are very comparable and I wanna say that time, I know there's weekday and weekend and then there's full season, right? And I wanna say Friday is considered a weekend.
I think TJ himself told us that.
And so I, I don't hold me to it this evening. I will go do the research and I will bring it back, but I'm pretty comfortable in saying I believe Friday falls into weekend play at most other courses. So at least in I know.
I have good thinking. So, when can, just to expedite, when can the council meet to have this discussion with said presidents of the leagues?
I would get the league board answers, yeah.
When can the council meet? What's a good, what's a good date? Because we have to get this done sooner rather than later because golf is happening now.
It is happening now.
Counsel, Harjo, Counselman Harjo.
I would think just by any weekday and evenings. I think we've got a couple folks that have kids work scheduled.
Fridays better?
Fridays work better.
Thursday night?
This was the problem at the last.
I could do an evening soon. I know I was saying free on Fridays because we don't have Friday school because we have to work.
But Thursday, oh no, I got it. Anyway, can't do this Thursday.
But, no, these next two credits I can have.
Counselman Harjo.
We look at perhaps next, next Friday, excuse me, next Thursday, twenty, that gives council and staff some time to maneuver.
How about this? All the questions and the recommendations and not to put Counsel O'Malley on the spot, would you be willing to meet, if the whole council can't meet, would you guys feel comfortable if it was Tiff, myself, a couple of council, just to help?
Some league representatives.
Yeah, to expedite all this?
My request is that the council still gets the invite and the opportunity. If you're not available, then you proceed on.
Sounds good.
So council, O'Malley, you co-opt that and then we'll just, we'll find a time and we'll just sit down and discuss and discuss and then we'll put out the invite and if you make it, if not, then we'll give you all the answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dialogue will prolong the end.
Okay.
And resolving some of this.
What about though?
Sorry, going to give more.
Can you also make sure like Jake and the golf management team is, course management is there?
I just wanna say, I think, and I'll throw names, Jeff has been thrown into a situation that, God bless him, he has no idea and you've got community members that sometimes cannot be kind. But I think when you put somebody into a situation that they have zero knowledge about, it's just a horrible deal. So I give kudos to him for putting up with all the stuff that he's having to put up with. But I had this discussion, you know, with somebody else today, it's like, somebody, city, somebody has to give him knowledge, something he doesn't get.
We'll get, we'll get him some direction. Then also helps the city staff with direction too. So we'll figure out the resolution, get that back to you guys and then we'll make it happen sooner than later.
Tiffany, thank you for your interview.
Yeah.
You don't have enough.
You don't have enough.
You need to add ball for now.
Thank you.
Can we run down and just put this on the table for now?
Yep.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that one to table everything right now?
I need to go for the ice.
Number four.
I would.
Okay, can I get a motion just to table this and still the next?
Make a motion to table and deliver a motion decision regarding golf tournament.
It's been motioned and seconded for the discussion. Hearing that, I'll call for the question. Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Brennan, Counsel O'Malley, Counselman Harjo.
Aye.
Let's run down to a non-action. This was, I apologize to Ian, he gave it to me a while ago and it got lost in translation, but this was the airport recommendation. So I wanna know if the council, where you guys wanna go with this one? This was the discussion on the airport committee's recommendation for the city to consider adopting ELMOR CAM Airport zoning regulations for property requests to be annexed into the city of Mount Hill. Counselman Harjo?
In the same spirit of earlier conversation, the movement we've made on protecting the airport space, trading for the two hundred and seventy-three acres, I think this, I think this travels right along with that. Protecting that in terms of, this is the first step towards protecting it by zoning policy that can be adopted. Really, this is, this is a no-brainer. Tom and I had a wonderful discussion about this at length and it does very much make sense. I think if we could get some feedback from legal after, you know, having legal review the county's airport zoning regulations so where we can cross-match those to the city, understand, you know, that like their formatting is gonna be different and so on. But that seemingly is the logical first step to protecting that space from encroachment or potential FAA issues that are introduced by new development in that overlays. that seemingly is the logical first step to protecting that space from encroachment or potential FAA issues that are introduced by new development in that, in that overlay zone.
And Ian and, and Tom, you come down, you guys are part of this really quick, sorry to put you on the spot. This was the, the old, so does the city wanna do their own, do a, their own airport, or do you just wanna, that's, I guess that's my question, right Ian? Does the city wanna adopt the counties, or do we wanna do our own with airport committee input? What, what, what's your guys' thoughts on that?
So, the low-hanging fruit would be to say, if you wanna get adopted into the city, there's already zoning your under, and you just turn that with you as you come into the city. I think you're gonna get the least amount of resistance on that. I think if you wanna go to the larger area and say, hey, we wanna do some zoning in order to protect this area and make that, that area more valuable, then you should expect more pushback on that. Because people are gonna have to say, okay, we see the trade and the values will go up. And I think that sort of all ties into, if you get that railway bypass, then we can get some activity out there. Railway extension, some new businesses, aviation businesses on the field, and I think the economics of it really make it very obvious that making a change like that would be advantageous to property owners.
I didn't see in there, and maybe I missed it, I know you can do research about this stuff and you do this as well, Tom. It doesn't stop, like, a, a business, this is more or less, you know, like, if we wanna do private, public partnerships or joint ventures out there where we can do commercial out there, that's not gonna hinder any of this, right? Okay. That was my biggest question. Councilman Harjo?
Two things. One, when it comes to, to the limitation of, of land use in that sense, I feel like, and Paul can probably speak to this much better than I could, but I feel like there are steps between this initial concept of, of adopting mirrored language to Elmore County's airport zoning regs and creating those for ourselves, that in the meantime, this helps protect the instance of, you know, somebody along that western corridor of, of Air Base Row, near, say, like, Air Base in Elm Crest, if somebody wanted to build a five-story apartment complex over there that is in, you know, that is in the flight pattern, that we, as the city, have tools to say, this, this is within the airport overlay zone, this isn't possible. Paul, correcting if I'm wrong, we can't adopt Elmore County's zoning regs as cities without essentially writing them as our own and adopting them as our own, correct?
So, I guess here before, does the council have an appetite to do the airport overlay, and in doing one, here moving forward? Councilwoman Garvey?
What happened to the one that was already created?
I think that's the, did we have one already?
Yes, we did.
Oh, Brock was not, yeah. Councilman Harjo?
Brock had one, and it was essentially this, it was a mirror of the, of the Elmore County airport zoning regs, so the city has seen this in the past, it just, now we're essentially just reattacking it to, to try and get it through.
Um, and just, I guess, so I can be clear, this, this that you brought forward is strictly about a condition of annexation only. Because you're right, we will have massive pushback if we push out into the county and put restrictions on.
So, this is the low-hanging fruit, that people would not have a change in zoning for their property when they come into the city.
I, I can support that, I, I'm not willing to tackle just yet the, the bigger picture.
I think we could- So, even having this discussion, so one of the things that needs to be looked at is the development of the airport and the infrastructure that it can provide and the tax rates that's coming. None of this is gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take years to build up to that, even though the railroad would be huge. Now, Ian had mentioned about an aviation business, that's only like a drop in the bucket, it's really the commercial infrastructure that's gonna use land, rail, and air. That's where the money's at, long-term. I can tell you right now that when you guys nixed that study, I got phone calls on. It's that big of a, everybody's on, business is gonna look at the country, it's just a matter of when and how fast. Even the big businesses that would like to come here, or it's gonna take them time to get here, because they already know there's a power issue. And they, they're gonna have to move their facilities to come here, it's not a, probably a several-year development going on. So, for instance, also, with the airport as it is at this time, we have FAA guidelines, we have two approaches coming in, GPS one-zero and two-eight. So, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna inhibit those approaches, right, structurally wise. Also, there's no flag in place, and what I mean by flag, if somebody designs or wants to put up something, even at, at this point, there's nothing that says it's within an airport or even on the airport. So, let's just say, Mr. Brennan there would like to build a hangar at the airport, he can go get a permit, it doesn't get flagged. It basically goes in to the permits department, and then luckily, I'm tuned into it, and when I see something, I go, hey, you can't put that there, because there's a clearance between the taxiway and the building, all set for wing clearance, right? We need something in place, even at this juncture, so that it creates a flag, so everybody in line can look at it and make those decisions, to be able to develop. And that's the biggest thing that I see right now, the, the, the later the development of the place and the expanding on the, the guidance around the airport is a whole, that's a whole other subject as it develops.
So, when you say, you made a comment, you said when we nixed that study, you're referring to the, the railroad feasibility study and all that, right? I know, but, or, when you get information like that from constituents or people, you say, your phone's ringing off the hook, I don't know that, right? Are you able to come in and, like, give us a, an update as a council, like, because that, that means a lot to me, I want industry in here, but I don't hear of industry wanting to come in here, right? So, just, I guess, keep me apprised if you hear something like that, or?
Sure.
So, let us look for Brock's, it's gotta be somewhere in the, in the Google Drive or, or whatever, somewhere, you know what I mean? Do you have it? And then, I guess, we can disseminate that out and, and see how, get Ian and Tom and say, hey, does this, he spit the mold, does he wanna tweak it, do he, is it good? And, and, cool. I appreciate you guys coming, seriously. But, thank you. Any other questions for Ian and, and Tom?
When's the next airport advisory meeting?
It's the quarterly meeting, uh, what is the date on that?
It's in April.
I think it's April, I'm not sure what the date is, though. And it's gonna be our organizational meeting.
I don't know, I'm not shooting a tape, I know a lot, but I'm not shooting now.
A follow.
I'll look tomorrow, but, you know.
Okay, anything else, council? No, I, with, for Tom and Ian?
Well, kinda, because Snapcom has, you guys wanna hang around, but it's not on the agenda, so I won't be asking you, but, just so you know.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. Run down the final comment, Councilwoman Orkla.
Yeah, so a constituent reached out to me via email, I'll just read just a little bit, it's kind of long here. The issue is congestion on the radio frequency used by pilots operating at the Mountain Home Airport in and surrounding southern Idaho, northern Nevada, and eastern Oregon. This safety issue can be easily mitigated by changing the frequency for communications when operating at the Mountain Home Airport. The state's aeronautics division director is responsible for safe flight operations in Idaho. He recognizes the problem, believes changing the Mountain Home Airport frequency is the best solution, and has provided two frequencies from which to choose. He also provided a link to the form needed to apply for frequency, okay, so that goes on and on. So, is that something that we would need to, like, bring Tom back in, like, you know, for another agenda item in the future to, to update us on something like this, if there is potentially a significant safety issue?
Absolutely, but, in the sake of not having Tom back, I will go out of turn and have Tom, you wanna answer that one for us, Tom? Yes, please. Or Ian, both you guys, I don't care, whoever.
He's good.
Because I wanna, I want you to get your answers.
So, this is news to me, I, I've heard of this conversation come up professionally and flying in this area, I've spoken to many professional pilots, the ag community, the fire community, and they feel that change in the frequency would be an impact going against them because of situation awareness when you're flying low level. Our airport is what's called uncontrolled airspace, we do not need a transponder and you do not need a radio, those are options to fly here. So, how does that even impact somebody that has no transponder or radio? And then also, I just, you need to pull this up, just something really quick, just going FlightAware, you can do a ADS-B report of Mountain Home, Gooding, and Drum, all three of those are on the same frequencies. Both of those two other airports are busier than us. Today, on the phone, it was kind of interesting, I had a discussion with somebody at the state aeronautics, about a different subject, and this past weekend, on Saturday, we were discussing the safety standout they had, and this did not come up in the conversation at all, because I was kinda curious. I didn't pry, I didn't pick, I wanted to see if it would come out at all, it did not. So, as far as I'm concerned, professionally here, I don't see any issue with it. I have not, I had the FAA here a couple weeks ago, about two weeks ago, they didn't say anything about it. So, if it would be a safety concern with the state aeronautics, or, or the FAA, I would think that they would call the, to the Mountain Home or the airport manager and say something. So, I haven't, you know, seen anything officially to, to back that or support that.
And so, as a council person, when you get a, a email like this, it's one that we, and it sounds like it's safety issues, one that we wanna want to just say, well, we'll figure it out, right? So, thanks for going on the record for this, on behalf of the city?
Yeah, so, I lived on an airport community for twenty years, and we had an adjacent airfield as well, and to start off, we, we both had the same frequency, and then somebody in their greater wisdom decided that we need to be on different frequencies, and it did become a problem, because it's like, you're close enough that if you're listening to one radio, you know, it's like, okay, they're flying into Columbia, or they're flying into Pine Mountain Lake, and you can, you can sort of get a situational awareness of where, where people are, when they're on different frequencies, you don't have that situational awareness, so some people can claim that there's a safety issue, and it's a correct fact, and it causes people consternation, doesn't mean that it's true, so.
Councilman?
The next airport advisory committee is April fifteenth. I sent you a text.
All right, comment, any final comments, council?
Seems appropriate.
Councilman Harjo?
First things first, I'd like to request to add deliberation decision of a new draft of the Mountain Home Airport Control and O U to the next council meeting agenda.
Support that.
I support that. Do you have the draft? Who's making the draft? You're working on it, Councilwoman? Okay.
Follow-up to that, I'd also like to add an intergovernmental agreement regarding waiving fees, such as building permit fees and potential other similar items between the city and county for a following, not this coming meeting, but the following meeting, first in April.
Counsel, you got, you got one, you said you supported it? That's it?
One more? Just wanted to give the council an update, I bumped into Ted, we were in the, in the hallway earlier, he gave us, or is going to give us some- Okay, wonderful, thank you. Some pool progress, things are looking very good. He mentioned that the tests regarding pressure testing and potential damage at the pool from earlier in the year came back with a positive outcome, so, took a look, great there. As well, Ted recently also got his D O P L license here for his public works license, so congratulations, Ted.
I think anyone of you wanna filter out the pool?
Anyone wanna go in, it's a little cold in there.
Counsel, uh, exact session? Councilman?
Real quick, can, can you let us know as soon as possible when that letter's ready for signatures from, from county to bar, support letter?
You're up?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I don't-
Right, it's time. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjutant executive session, make sure that, I have our code seven-four dash two six, section B and F.
Second.
The motion is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, Councilwoman Brennan? Councilwoman Orkla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.